Please to have with us Pastor Mark Nowak from the First Baptist Church of Troy to give you a vocation, and that will be followed by the pledge of allegiance. Please rise Pastor.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, Lord, we do acknowledge that you are a sovereign, holy God, but also one that is loving and merciful. Lord, we thank you for how that love was demonstrated in the life and death of our Lord Jesus Christ, and how that life and death of Christ provided an ethical basis for you to provide common grace upon this nation. Lord, we thank you for this common grace, and we pray that you would continue to bless our nation. Lord, today we pray for our nation that you would keep it financially and militarily strong, that you would give our administration wisdom as it addresses issues facing our country. Lord, we also pray for our community of Troy. We thank you for those here that are willing to serve, often a thankless job, a difficult job in a difficult time. Lord, we pray that other good men and women would consider serving this community. Lord, we are so thankful for others that serve Troy, for policemen and firemen, for those that are being honored today. Lord, we pray that you would keep them safe in the line of duty, that you would keep them fit for service, and Lord, we just pray your protection upon them. Lord, we also pray for wisdom tonight for those that are here. We pray that they would understand the purpose of government, and that they would understand the role that they have serving this community. Or we pray that they would listen well, that they would articulate well, that they would stand on their convictions, that all that is done would be done in a way that would be pleasing to you. And Lord, we just give you thanks and praise for how you've worked in this country, and we pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor. May we have a roll call Mrs. Bartholomew?
Mayor Schelling?
Here.
Councilwoman Beltramini? Fleming?
Here.
Howarla?
Here.
Kerwin?
Here.
McGinnis?
Here.
Slater?
Here.
Quorum present. Mayor Pretend Fleming?
Move that the Troy City Council excuses the absence of Councilwoman Beltramini at the regular City Council meeting of Monday, June 7th, 2010, and the closed session for Monday, June 7th, 2010, due to being out of the county.
Do we have?
Support.
A second? Moved by, excuse me, moved by Mayor Pretend Fleming, seconded by Councilman Slater, that we excuse Councilwoman Robin Beltramini from being out of the county. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Mayor Schelling?
No.
Councilwoman Fleming?
Yes.
Howarla?
Yes.
Kerwin?
No.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Quorum, our motion passes. This evening, we begin our meeting with some very special recognition. Each year, the Police Officer of the Year is chosen, and the non-sworn Police Department Employee of the Year is chosen, and the Commander Officer, Command Officer of the Year is chosen. And I'm going to go down to the front to present their proclamations to them, but I want you all to be thinking, as you hear about the exemplary service of these three individuals, that they represent all of the police department in their service, and that as they perform their duties each and every day, they're doing so as a team. And the special recognition of these three individuals is well deserved, as each year we do this for our police employees. So with that, I'll be down to the front. Now our first one, if I could have Officer Joe Morgan come forward please. Stand right by me for this wonderful, well-deserved honor. This is a proclamation to honor Joseph Morgan as the 2009 Police Officer of the Year, whereas Officer Joseph Morgan began his career with the Troy Police Department on October 13th, 1997. He has worked in the Directed Patrol Unit, Patrol Operations Division, and Traffic Safety Unit, and is currently assigned to Operations Division Patrol Shift 4. And whereas his selection was based on his commitment to both the department and the community, as well as his superior performance, hard work, enthusiasm, and dedication to duty, as well as his commitment to providing the best service to the residents of Troy. And whereas during 2009, Officer Morgan had a total of 107 arrests, including 15 arrests for operating motor vehicle while intoxicated. Other highlights include March 2009 arrests for numerous larcenies from automobiles following a two-month investigation, arrest of a career felon for possession with intent to deliver marijuana, an April 2009 arrest of a suspect involved in a hit-and-run traffic crash in Bloomfield Township for operating a motor vehicle while intoxicated, and additional arrests for retail fraud, raking and entering, identity theft, and larcenies from buildings. And whereas, in Officer Morgan's more than 12 years with the police department, he has consistently demonstrated commitment to and enthusiasm for the community. He is always eager to assist his fellow police officers in even the most difficult situations. And believe me, he has been in those situations. He consistently conducts thorough follow-up investigations that often lead to prompt arrests of suspects involved in these incidents. And whereas, in 2009, the Oakland County Sheriff's Office was investigating a home invasion and armed robbery. During the incident, a victim was kidnapped and sexually assaulted. Officer Morgan provided information to sheriff's investigators that resulted in the arrest of four suspects. Three of the suspects were convicted, and the fourth is awaiting trial. And whereas Officer Morgan goes above and beyond the call of duty, displaying the ability to fulfill the diverse and numerous expectations of a police officer, and is a tremendous asset to the Troy Police Department. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Troy does hereby join with the citizens of Troy to express sincere congratulations to Officer Joseph Morgan on the occasion of being chosen 2009 Police Officer of the Year by the Troy Police Department. And be it further resolved, the City Council commends Officer Morgan for his dedication and commitment to providing the best possible service to the citizens of Troy and his fellow employees. And this is presented the 7th day of June 2010, signed by myself and all members of the council with great admiration. After we present ours, the county commissioner, Tim Burns, has certificates for them too, but I thought it'd be nice to have all three come up, then we could get pictures of them all together. Now if I could have Renee Jelly come forward please. And this was who you saw on the front page of the Somerset Gazette this week. Showing the guys up, right? How are you?
Good.
This is a proclamation to honor Renee Jelly, the 2009 Non-Sworn Police Department Employee of the Year, whereas Communication Supervisor Renee Jelly began her career with the Troy Police Department on April 14th, 1997. She has worked the entire time in the Police Department Communications Section, and is currently assigned to Communications Section Shift 3. And whereas Renee is being honored as the 2009 Non-Sworn Police Department Employee of the Year for her outstanding performance, dedication to her position, professionalism, and commitment to providing the best service to the residents of Troy. And whereas Renee plays a key role in developing the relationship between the Troy Police Department and the citizens of Troy by providing professional and helpful service as the first point of contact for citizens in need of police service through her work in the Communications Section. And whereas the majority of the Communication Supervisor Jelly's career has been on the midnight shift, Patrol Operations Supervisors praise her for her ability to stay calm in stressful situations, and respect her for her concern for the safety of the police officers. She is a team player who efficiently runs the communication operations. And whereas despite the demands that come from the position and the technological abilities required, Renee has continuously risen to each occasion, providing assurance to citizens, thoroughly assessing each situation, and utilizing her skills to perform a service that is vital to the quality of life for our community. And whereas, an example of her abilities, Communication Supervisor Jelly was instrumental in the arrest of a suspect in 2009 for unlawfully driving away in an automobile. Thanks to her effective communication with Patrol Operations Police Officers, and coordination of the efforts of other Communications Section employees, police officers were able to arrest the suspect and recover the stolen truck within seven minutes from the time the crime was reported to the police department. And whereas, through Renee's leadership, hard work, and commitment to providing quality service, the Troy Police Department has gained the respect of the community and other law enforcement agencies. Now therefore be it resolved, the City Council of the City of Troy does hereby join with the citizens of Troy to express sincere congratulations to Renee Jelly on the occasion of being chosen the 2009 Non-Sworn Employee of the Year by the Troy Police Department. And be it further resolved, the City Council commends Communication Supervisor Renee Jelly for her leadership, dedication, and commitment to providing the best possible service to the city of Troy. Presented the 7th day of June 2010, signed by myself and all members of council with great appreciation. And now if I could please have Lieutenant David Livingston come forward. And this is very special for David, because he was chosen by the fellow members of the Traffic Safety Division for this award. This is a proclamation to honor Lieutenant David Livingston as the 2009 Police Command Officer of the Year. Whereas Lieutenant David Livingston began his career with the Troy Police Department on October 15th, 1980. He was promoted to Sergeant on September 23rd, 1995, and Lieutenant on July 9th, 2004. He has worked in the Community Services Section, Directed Patrol Unit, Criminal Investigations Section, Patrol Operations Division, Special Investigations Unit, and Training Section. And whereas his selection was based on his commitment to both the department and the community, as well as his superior performance, hard work, enthusiasm, and dedication to duty, as well as his commitment to providing the best service to the residents of Troy. And whereas Lieutenant Livingston is currently assigned to the Operations Division Special Operations Section as the commander, in his current assignment, Lieutenant Livingston has administered administrative responsibilities for the Directed Patrol Unit, Evidence Technicians, and Traffic Safety Unit. Police officers assigned to the Traffic Safety Unit recommended Lieutenant Livingston for this award. And whereas, in an effort to reduce costs and improve efficiency, the police department is committed to the transition from paper reports to reports in electronic format. During 2009, Lieutenant Livingston was instrumental in teaching police department employees how to use the Oakland County Clemis Courts and Law Enforcement Management Information System, electronic citations and crash reporting programs. And whereas, Lieutenant Livingston established police department policy on the forfeiture of vehicles for persons arrested for second and third offenses of operating while intoxicated. He also made significant contributions toward the city's cost recovery ordinance. He's working on directed driver and motor carrier enforcement ordinances with the city attorney's office. And whereas Lieutenant Livingston contributes a significant amount of his own time on work-related projects in an effort to achieve police department goals and provide quality service to the community. He's respected by his peers, the employees that work for him, and the many of the countless members of the community that he serves. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Troy does hereby join with the citizens of Troy to express sincere congratulations to Lieutenant David Livingston on the occasion of being chosen 2009 Police Command Officer of the Year by the Troy Police Department. And be it further resolved, the City Council commands Lieutenant Livingston for his leadership, dedication, and commitment to providing the best possible service to the citizens of Troy and his fellow employees. He's a tremendous asset to the Troy Police Department and the city of Troy. Presented the 7th day of June 2010, signed by myself, all the members of council with great admiration. If you want to stay up here, and if we could have Officer Joe Morgan and Renee Jelly come back up. Commissioner Tim Burns has certificates for you also.
I'm not going to follow the mayor and reread all the proclamations. She did such an excellent job in explaining the merits of all these outstanding officers, but I do want to just briefly say thank you on behalf of Oakland County. As we heard from what the mayor said, we had an officer that has helped us with the Oakland County Sheriff's Investigation. And without great officers in Troy, the Oakland County Prosecutor wouldn't be able to do her job either. We heard about the Clemis system. It's a system for inter-agency communications that helps with prosecutions and criminal investigations. And without officers doing an excellent job of filling those forms out and understanding the system, we wouldn't be able to do our job throughout the county either. So when you do good work for Troy, you're doing good work for all the residents of Oakland County. And we want to recognize you, give you a certificate of your achievement. It's a special day to take a little pride in your accomplishments. It's okay to do that. And I wanted to again on behalf of Oakland County, thank you for the great job you're doing. You've made Troy one of the safest communities in the country, and that's also helped Oakland County one of the safest counties in the state and the country, and we appreciate that.
As I said at the beginning, these three are three of our outstanding department, and they truly represent the quality job that the police department does each and every day. We're very grateful. Now, this evening, we have no carryover items or public hearings, so before our postponed items, we will have public comment. And Commissioner Burns, before you, your name is included here as under public comment. You had some things that you wanted to impart to us?
Sure. I agree with my whole agenda, but I like to come in every once in a while and provide you with an update of some of the things that are going on with Oakland County. When I first was running for this office four years ago, it doesn't seem it's been that long, but I was an advocate for working at the county to work to recruit businesses to the area that focused on the life sciences and medical infrastructure. Now when I say medical infrastructure, that means the businesses that support our medical industry, the people that make the products, the doctors use, the nurses use, the medical technicians use, so that we could not just bring more business to the county, but use that to bring jobs that we can export outside of the county and across the country, maybe even internationally. And over the last few years of advocating for that, we finally put together a program called Medical Main Street. And we just reached Medical Main Street's one-year anniversary last month. And I wanted to give you just a brief update of in our first year, what we've been able to accomplish with this program. In the last year, Medical Main Street has brought in $9 million in new investment in development for areas that are regards to medical infrastructure and life sciences. And they've created 250 new jobs in Oakland County. Now that's with only a couple of staff people in our first year, and we're hoping to expand upon that. But I think that's off to a good start, especially when we're seeing job loss after job loss report. To see a positive number is always a good thing. In addition to that, for more information, you can go to medicalmainstreet.org, and there's a lot more information. But I also wanted to highlight that just last month, we went to Chicago for a program called the Bio-International Annual Conference. This is a huge international conference with developers from pharmacies, from medical suppliers, people who do studies for the different hospitals and the schools that do research. And we met with hundreds of people, not just at the booth that we had, but also in face-to-face meetings off-site. And we're also in the process of potentially bringing a huge medical supplier based upon that act of participation. So we're not just sitting here and sending out emails and telling people Oakland County is great and resting on our laurels. We're actually going out to where the people are, showing them what a great community we are, and working to bring them here so we can get people back to work. And that's something I've been advocating for, I'll continue to advocate for. And I had a few people saying, you were talking about this medical thing. What is that and what's happened with it the last couple of years? So I did want to give an update on where that is. And again, for more information, you can go to medicalmainstreet.org. As you may know, I'm one of three county commissioners that serve on the 10-person Parks Commission for Oakland County that oversees the countywide Parks and Recreation Program, 13 county parks in our Mobile Recreation Department. And I wanted to let you know about a program that's taking, in our backyard, it's going to be taking place in Madison Heights at Red Oaks Golf Course. And it's going to be Golf and a Movie, Saturday, June 12th. And it's for ages five and older, includes nine holes of golf, barbecue, and then a movie with popcorn. And pretty much what's going to take place is the movie will be G-rated and appropriate for ages five and older. You need to bring your chairs, blankets, or towels to sit on. It's going to be on a projection kind of inflatable type movie thing. It costs $20 if you're going to do the golf, the barbecue, and the movie. And it's going to cost $5 if you just want to come and watch the movie and enjoy the barbecue. Pre-registration is required. You need to go to Oakland County Parks website, which is destinationoakland.com, and that can get you signed up. The golf starts at 6:00 PM, the barbecue's at 8:00 PM, and the movie's at dusk. And again, for more information, you can go to destinationoakland.com, and that will also have some more information about all the different things that are going on with the park system right now. And again, if you ever have any questions about the park system or anything else going on in Oakland County, you can contact me. To put another head on, I'm on the executive board for the Troy Community Coalition. It's a group that works to prevent drug and alcohol abuse in the community. And we have a partnership with Troy Lanes, and starting tomorrow on Tuesday, June 8th, and throughout the summer, it's Kids Only Night. And that goes from 6:30 to 8:00 PM, and they call it Rockin' Bowl. And they're going to have those glow lights, and they're going to have the disco music, and they're going to have bowling for kids. And it's kids only, so that it's a fun way to be safe and secure during the summer, keep your kids off the street and out of trouble in a safe, secure area. They don't let adults in. It's just staff, so you don't have to worry about people interfering with your kids. And it's from 6:30-9 at Troy Lanes, and it's $8 admission fee. And a dollar from every admission goes to help the Troy Community Coalition as a fundraiser as well. So keep your kids safe, help a good nonprofit organization in the community, and enjoy your summer. And finally, I wanted to promote the annual Flag Day celebration that I host each year. It's going to be this Sunday, and it's going to be at 2:00 PM at the Historical Museum. That's Sunday, June 12th. And it's going to include a presentation on the history of the flag by the Troy Clausen Elks Club. And they actually have flags throughout the history of the country. And they're going to show us some of these flags and the progression of the development of the flag, and give us a little presentation on how the flags evolved over time. There's going to be wax museum speeches from historical figures that can be portrayed by some of our outstanding Barnard Elementary School third graders. We're going to have a We're going to have a musical tribute to America by the Larson Middle School orchestral ensemble. Each year, I recognize a few of our local residents for outstanding volunteerism, and I would be providing them with flags that were flown over the U.S. Capitol, courtesy of Congressman Gary Peters. And we're going to wrap up the event with a Patriotic Medal of Songs by our own Troy Community Chorus. Now, things are so divisive nowadays, it doesn't matter what your political spectrum is, what side of the aisle you're on, how you lean. When it comes to the flag, I think that's something we all agree on, it's something to be respected and treated with dignity. And this is an event where we can all come together and express and enjoy the values that the flag stands for: honesty, truth, respectfulness. And I'd encourage people to come out. The event's free against the Troy Historical Museum at two P.M. And it's just going to be a time to enjoy our common values, our common traits, our common heritage, and enjoy each other, and pay some respect to the flag all stand, stood for, and all the people who've made a lot of sacrifices throughout the history of our country for that flag. So again, I hope to see a lot of you out there at two P.M. It's free. Parking is allowed across the street at the nursery school that, I can't think of the name, but you'll see it at the corner. And we're asking that only people with, who are seniors or with children participate in the event, park in the Historical Museum parking lot. Again, it's this Sunday at two o'clock. And for more information on that, you can go to my website, timothyburns.org. I'm also on Facebook at facebook.com/TimBurns. And I've tried out Twitter, but right now Dave Lambert seems to be the only person who's following me on it. So we'll see if we can get a few more people to join this conversation there. But again, it's a privilege and a pleasure to serve the community as your county commissioner, and always glad to see the members of our council, the people in the audience, and have a chance to give you a little bit of update about what I'm working on, what I think's important for you to know about, and where we're going to help keep the county moving in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker that signed up under public comment is Jennifer Evans. Good evening.
Hi, thank you. I'm here with Jennifer Evans. Actually, I'm Susan Stefanski from SEMCOG.
Pardon?
I'm Susan Stefanski from SEMCOG. I'm here with Jennifer Evans. I'll be giving the presentation today. Thank you for your time. I do have a few slides today, and I will be as brief as possible. I'm going to provide you with an overview of the Rochester Road Access Management Plan, which will be conducted in Royal Oak, Claussen, Troy, Rochester Hills, and Rochester. There are many benefits to access management. The techniques not only reduce crashes and improve traffic flow, they can improve walkability, bikeability, access to transit, and help manage stormwater.
Good point.
Given the density, traffic volumes, and crashes along Rochester Road, this is a high-priority corridor. There are between twenty thousand and thirty-five thousand vehicles on Rochester Road daily in Troy. One particular high-crash intersection is at Big Beaver. Another reason we decided to study Rochester Road is simply because Rochester Hills representative asked SEMCOG to provide this as a member service. So how do we go about mitigating some of the negative impacts of driveways along a road? By consciously regulating the number, placement, and design of those driveways, which we globally refer to as access management. And there are set standards for doing that, which are spelled out in MDOT's Access Management Guidebook. This is a well-researched and tested approach that we'll use throughout the study. There are two major outcomes of any access management study. One, the access management plan contains parcel-specific recommendations for each community, which we will ask each community to incorporate into their master plan. And two, the zoning ordinance gives each community the authority to implement those specific recommendations during the site plan review process. In both cases, the idea is to be consistent throughout the corridor communities while still allowing for flexibility to address unique situations. Let me give you a few examples of the types of access standards that would be included in the ordinance. The standards generally apply to the spacing between driveways and between driveways and intersections, the offset between driveways across the street from each other, and shared access between adjacent parking lots. The plan will make specific recommendations to address areas where current conditions don't meet those standards. We may recommend closing, consolidating, or redesigning driveways, connecting parking areas, and space permits, creating front or rear service drives connecting multiple parking areas. While the driveways are our main focus, we will also look at some other related things along the corridor. We may make some recommendations for improving intersections or signalization. We'll also take care to make sure that recommendations do not hinder safe walking, biking, or access to transit. And we'll also suggest greening techniques that can help to improve stormwater management. When and how our plan recommendations apply, access management can be a long-term process and requires good coordination between the community, the road agency, and private business owners. The zoning ordinance gives the community the authority to require implementation of the recommendations if there is a significant change in the use of the property requiring site plan approval. Or each community can consider other sources of funding, like through a downtown development authority, or through an external grant program like Section 319. This slide shows the responsibilities of the partners in this project. As the City Council, we want your input in the project as it moves forward. We'll also ask that Troy make any zoning ordinance changes and master plan amendments at the end of the study. The project begins this month. Data analysis and data collection will take place throughout the summer, and the project will be completed in May 2011. Like I mentioned before, we want your input during this project. Your steering committee representative, Brent Savidant, will keep you informed throughout the project. So that concludes my overview, and I thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Your Honor?
Yes.
This also appears as item I-8 on the consent agenda.
Right.
Thank you.
Jennifer, you're not going to, you're not going to speak too then? You just signed up together?
No, thank you for your participation. And we will present anything to you, and be sure about the question that you want.
Okay, thank you. And our next speaker is Janice Daniels.
Well, there were some great presentations. Good evening. I guess I have to be the balance to the opposite side because all is not well in Main Street, USA. I've come here this evening because I think it's time to discuss openly some disturbing developments and trends in the direction that our city management is taking. I want to point out some areas of inconsistency and offer some suggestions that might help move our fair city towards success and innovation in this new economic predicament in which we find ourselves in. It seems to me that the taxpayers have almost been put in a role akin to being the parents, saying to the city management, there's no more money, and we need to see some improvement in your budgeting behavior. And the city management is really, quite frankly, acting like spoiled children, running around making more messes than you started with, instead of recognizing that your tricks and tactics are transparent. It would be my greatest wish that the taxpayers don't give up quite so easy to your bold-faced attempt to increase our taxes one way or the other at some time in the near future. Good parents don't give up that easy. I am happy to see that you've decided that you can show the faces of the people that come to you with their public comments, because that was very disrespectful that you were showing the backside of people. So that's my minor inconsistency. Second, your decision to shut down the Troy Days Festival instead of allowing the original group of private citizens who brought this event into prominence to host a pared-down version of its is nothing short of a blatant payback for our no-new-tax vote last February. I'd like to suggest that because the city workers have an across-the-board advantage in terms of higher incomes, better health care coverage, and more stable pension plans than the citizens in the private sector do, who again are paying their wages, it's incumbent upon the city workers to step up to the plate and volunteer their time and their talents free of charge on this one simple weekend of the year to allow the city an opportunity to celebrate whatever it is that we celebrate at the Troy Days. You should be ashamed of yourselves for once again giving us the heavy hand of retribution for our no-new-tax vote in February. Now, I don't like to pick on any one of the children of the city family, but sometimes the behavior of one child is so much more egregious than the other children that they deserve to be singled out for a scolding. Mary Kerwin, how dare you lead the charge not to excuse other city council members in their absence when in fact you, as a city council representative to the Pension Board, missed sixty percent of the Pension Board meetings? That was three entire meetings and one half of yet another fourth meeting at a time when pensions are such a major item in the budget. I'm not even sure what to call this, but the word hypocrisy comes to mind. And there's an old saying that you should be mindful, Mary, that the people who live in glass houses shouldn't throw stones. And finally, we're still hearing the threat that you, seven to ten people out of a voting community that placed votes in this past ballot of over twenty thousand taxpayers, you seven to ten people are going to make the command decision to shut down our library in July of 2011. You've chosen to shut down very soon the library on the busiest day, which is Saturday. You refuse to look at salary reduction offers that you've been given, and you don't seem to be able to downsize operations so that our library can be self-sustaining in these difficult economic times. I would respectfully like to give you a list of things that I'll hope you'll consider as follows. One, scale down the computer access in the library and start charging everyone for its use. We don't have a mandate to pay for any other people's computer use. Nobody pays for mine. Start charging people to take out all of the movies. Why is it that the library is competing so unfairly with private companies like Blockbuster Video on the taxpayers' dime? Three, open the library at two o'clock Saturday, or on Tuesday through Friday, and close the library at seven o'clock on those days. Open the library at noon on Saturday and close it at eight P.M. And open the library at three P.M. on Sunday and close it at seven P.M. And then close it down completely on Monday. That would be an example of a fair way to accommodate the needs and desires of the community and to reduce your operational costs. Number four, I love the Police Department, you know that, and I've defended them before, but the Police Department agreed to give something like a five percent reduction in services through the use of furlough days, but that was only if the people voted to increase their own taxes. If in fact the Police Department has calculated that five percent of their time could be done away with and still keep the streets of Troy safe, then in the spirit of civic duty, the Police Department should eliminate five percent of the police force because apparently, according to their own calculations, they can do their job with a five percent reduction. I would like to see us reopen Mr. Zerlig's contract, eliminate the payment of his pension while he's actively employed by the city, thereby setting the standard and the tone of cooperation for all other city employees to follow. I'd like to say in conclusion that if members of this council do not have the skills needed to make these types of hard budgeting decisions, then the majority of you need to step down immediately and give the accountants, the CPAs, and the business owners among us an opportunity to address these issues, starting from their position of knowledge and experience, rather than from your position of retribution and defiance. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Peters, Richard Peters.
I'm Officer Mayor Tom. Hope you all had a nice holiday.
Thank you.
Following what this woman said, I kind of agree what she says up to a point. It seems pretty odd to me, or I would say odious in a way, that the Police Department, with all due respect, you know, they could take instead of an increase, you know, if everybody else is taking a ten percent pay cut, why isn't it everywhere across the board for everybody? I mean, you know, what's good for the goose should be good for the gander. The people of Troy see this stuff, and they, they don't like it, to be honest about it. So I think, you know, in that respect, we could, I mean, and as far as maybe vehicles could be delayed for a couple, you know, you don't have to get a new vehicle every year and all this stuff. And like, I know Sterling Heights had similar problems to what we're having here, and I think they saw that if I'm, I think their teachers or whatnot, or their administrators, you know, took additional cuts. I think what's at stake here isn't, it's, it's not how much you're making, well, it is, in a way, it's comparative to other communities. You could like take Birmingham and Bloomfield, but that's not really inaccurate, because those two cities basically have been bailed out by the federal government. You know, we all know they bailed out General Motors and whatnot. But here, I mean, Sterling Heights is more like an accurate, or choice, you know, it's more in our range. And that, in that respect, I think, you know, maybe we should take another, like, I think, for instance, this building department here, you know, do you really, when you look at the golf right now, and you see what's happened there, and you see these people, how they try to police themselves, and we've seen it time and time again from the stock market and right on down the line. Do you honest to God believe, you know, maybe in the short term it might be all right, but do you believe in the long term that that's really going to be the answer? I don't think so, because I remember what Teddy Roosevelt once said. He said, corporations have a right to make money, but they don't have a right to put themselves above the law. And I think that's kind of what we're at stake here in that respect. And one quick thing before I leave, this golf business here, again, we heard the company's going to be, next month, they're going to have that. Now, I, I can't believe they say next month. I mean, how big of a catastrophe does this have to be next month? I mean, there's literally thousands and thousands and thousands, you know, I mean, this is ridiculous. It should be, next week is not enough. And maybe they should try, you know, but that to me is, you know, so, well, thank you for, you know.
Our next speaker is Melissa Cummings.
Good evening. My name is Melissa Cummings, and I'm here tonight in regards to a rather threatening letter that was sent to many Troy residents, including myself, concerning the city's weboing policy. Now, I understand the city's finances are in jeopardy, and in these tough economic times, who isn't having financial difficulties? But by the City of Troy telling its residents that they're now responsible for maintaining property that does not belong to them is totally unacceptable. I have lived at my place of residence for eight years this month, and I have never maintained nor been asked to maintain the property in question. After receiving the letter on the Chapter eighty-two Property Maintenance Code, I called Mr. Ed Bowe, who confirmed which piece of property the city was now claiming is mine. Under the Chapter eighty-two Property Maintenance Code, and I quote, it states, "This chapter requires the owner, occupant, or persons having control or management of any premises within the City of Troy to cut turf brass or weeds," end of quote. I am not the owner nor have any control over this property alongside Long Lake Road. I did my homework, I went to City Hall, and I retrieved the plat map of my sub and reviewed my mortgage survey, as well as my neighbors. I even found the property stakes. And being that there are many roads that are as straight as Long Lake, there are many homeowners whose property will be staked out like mine. If they look at the maps, many will find their properties end on the inside of the city sidewalks. I would also like to add that this property behind me is not considered a right-of-way either. It's not listed as one on either the plat map or surveys. A woman from the Building Department in City Hall tried to tell me it was a right-of-way, and when I asked her why there isn't any type of driveway back there for me, she told me that that isn't allowed due to safety reasons, which brings me to my next point. Vehicles are allowed to travel at forty-five miles per hour on Long Lake Road. In fact, many roads in Troy, for example, Livernoy, John R., Big Beaver, et cetera, have posted speeds of forty-five miles an hour. Many of us know, however, that is a minimum speed of most drivers. In actuality, because many of these roads are five lanes, vehicles are traveling at much higher speeds, and the only thing that separates me from these vehicles while pushing a lawnmower is a curb, not even a shoulder. That terrifies me, especially when I know, when I know that large commercial trucks are included in the traffic flow. I'm afraid of being injured from debris thrown from the road. I've seen the garbage alongside these roads. I'm afraid of debris being thrown into the street and causing injury to people driving by. And what about the elderly population in Troy? Many of them are not physically able to maintain the extra property, and they are on fixed incomes which prevent them from paying someone else to do so. My next-door neighbor has lived in his home for over thirty years. He's missing part of, part of his leg from being a diabetic. How is he supposed to get out there and mow? To again quote from the letter that was sent out, it states, "Regardless of whether or not you have your contractor scheduled to cut your property, if it's not mowed when we check your area, we will mow the property and bill you the cost of mowing plus ten percent administration fee," end of quote. Not everybody, especially some of Troy's retired residents, are able to afford having someone else mow for them. And this leads me to my last point. Residents living in Troy already pay higher taxes than other areas. We know this before we buy homes, but we are willing to pay because of all that Troy has to offer, such as its excellent school system and low crime rate. However, now the city is adding additional taxes in the form of buying more gas to run my mower, and having to buy a new mower more frequently because it gets broken when mowing over the debris alongside the roadway that I mentioned earlier. over the debris alongside the roadway that I mentioned earlier. And who will be held liable if someone is injured or sustains damage to their vehicle from that debris? My homeowner's insurance will not provide coverage because it's not my property. I also see the property value of my home declining. I do not think I will get fair market value of my home when potential buyers find out they have to maintain property that does not belong to them. I know it would have prevented me from buying my home. In closing, the City of Troy needs to rethink their current we-mowing policies. These properties that the city is demanding us as residents to maintain are not ours. In fact, many of these properties are running along county roads, not city roads. And mowing along these roads can be dangerous for the typical homeowner with no safety gear and high-powered equipment. We all need to buckle down in today's economy, but if the City of Troy continues to push its economic hardships on its residents, it will not continue to be the state of tomorrow. It will become the city of yesterday.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Mr. James Savage.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. I want to comment on the Building Department. And I'm thinking during the last year, we have heard from management and council over and over again, what a wonderful competent workforce we have here, and laying people off would be a last resort. At the last meeting, our Building Department manager offered an alternative to the privatization. Over the years, the city has ventured into many areas that should have been left to the private sector, but the Building Department is not one of them. It is an integral part of City Hall. The issue before you, although being precipitated by dollars and cents, is also a moral issue. It seems to me that the Building Department has become the sacrificial lamb. Our city management seems intent on this policy, but let us not forget that management policies have not been very successful over the years. A report I recently heard that in the last year, incomes in private sector fell 10%, while incomes in the public sector rose 6%. This leads us to believe that something has to give. But laying off people is not the answer. It just makes the situation worse. It's been said that civil service does not work. It's broken. But that goes too for the private corporate sector. Before the city started going broke, we saw the collapse of Enron, Kmart, the motor industry, Delphi, AIG, Countrywide, and many more, and probably will soon be British Petroleum. It wasn't the cashiers or the secretaries that put them out of business. It was the bad management at the top. And it wasn't our building inspectors that put us in the hole that we're in. It was the top management that treated Big Beaver like a bottomless money pit. For years, our leaders in both public and private sectors have acted as if money grew on trees. We can always rely on Uncle Sam to print a few more trillion dollars, while the gravy train has run out of steam. This is where we're at, and we have to turn things around with our own people and our own local businesses. We cannot rely on the federal or state governments or the corporate world to bail us out. We need all our employees, including managers, department heads, and consultants, to follow the lead of our Building Department and make the necessary concessions. But most of all, we have to stop the waste on Big Beaver and other unnecessary projects. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes those that signed up under public comment. And under the postponed items, actually, Building Department Services should have been G1 and Golf Course Operations G2 because we had a resolution on the item that was moved to second and then postponed. So I'm going to call it, I'm going to do the Building Department Services G1 and then go to the Golf Course Operations. Okay? I spoke to Mr. Zerlig about that earlier today. Yes? Do we need a resolution, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Please.
Move that we...
Suspend the rules.
Suspend the rules?
Support.
Move by the Chair, seconded by Councilman Kerwin, that we suspend the rules. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew, on the suspension?
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Howarla?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes. Motion passes. And I move that we do Building Department Services as G1 and the Golf Course Operations as G2.
Support.
Just a minute.
Someone talking on the phone.
Ah, yes, I won't. Move by the Chair, seconded by Mayor Protown Fleming. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Howarla?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. I've been notified that someone was speaking on a cell phone during the meeting, and that is not allowed. If someone has to make a call, they need to leave the room. And if you have a cell phone or electronic device, if you would turn it off, because even when it's unvibrated, it interferes with our sound system. Okay, that taken care of, we'll go to the Building Department Services. We have a pending resolution moved by Kerwin, seconded by Fleming, and then we had an amendment as amended. Moved by the same. And we have some additional information in our packet. Mr. Zerlig, was there information that needed to be presented orally as well as written? Or do you want to just take questions from the council on how, would you like to proceed on?
I can provide a very short summary and then answer any questions that you may have.
Okay.
I can provide a short summary. Have Peggy Sears, Susan Leirstein, and John Lamorato also provide a short summary. It's all up to you.
Is that fine, council? Yes? All right. Thank you.
The short summary is that there is not an employee proposal. Mr. Steimak approached Peggy Sears, Mark Miller, John Lamorato, and myself. The proposal, as advanced by Mr. Steimak, was for a 35% across-the-board decrease in pay for the Building Department employees after laying two of them off. And there was also a revenue sharing option, should revenue lines go over a certain threshold that was indicated. And an indication that should the union personnel not take the 35% pay decrease, then the balance would be spread amongst the classified and exempt employees that would remain. Peggy Sears, the HR Director, and Mark Miller spoke with all of the employees, and Peggy can indicate what the tally was in terms of those employees that were willing to accept that proposal. Peggy?
Thank you.
I'll just come into the microphone if you want to go further. Mr. Lamorato can take a scenario where even if all the employees were to agree to that proposal, it still would not meet the Safe Bill. Then that's up to you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, City Council, good evening. Mark Miller and I spoke with each of the members of the Building Department, provided them with a copy of the proposal that Mr. Steimak had prepared, reviewed each item with them, asked if they had any questions, offered that they could contact us at any time, even if it was over the weekend, if they had further questions. I did ask if they would sign an acknowledgement form. I wanted to make sure that they did understand the degree to which the proposal called for a decrease in salary. Including Mr. Steimak, there were three employees that indicated they would accept the proposal. If the union did not accept, and I have had indications that if the union employee did accept, that the union itself would not. It didn't get to that point, but that was a verbal representation. Then the savings that would have been achieved with that person's salary would have to be spread amongst the rest of the employees. The result would be that all of the other employees' salaries would be reduced by almost 40%. But bottom line is, we do not have agreement with all of the employees in terms of accepting the proposal.
Any questions for Mrs. Sears? Thank you.
Thank you.
We received, of course, all the written data with the agenda on this matter, and so the item then is before us. Do you have questions about anything that's in the contract? Councilman Slater, you had indicated you wanted the 80/20 information in the contract. I note that that's in there. Is there any other questions about certain parts and portions of it that someone to ask about?
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Kerwin?
I would be interested in hearing from Mr. Lamorato.
Yes. Mr. Lamorato?
I'm Mayor and City Council. Barb, Tony, can I have that one chart put up on the screen?
Just a, just a moment?
Yes. Thank you, Doug. I'd like to do is take a few minutes just to go over this chart which I prepared, which looks at the Safe Bill proposal and the Building Inspection Department's proposal as a cost comparison. What we'd asked is that our original, the green shaded column there, is what is contained in our document here, was based on permit revenue of $887,000, and that's how Safe Bill determined their bid and how the Building Department determined their cost. Just briefly to go over some of the assumptions that were used, $887,000 was the initial revenue forecast based on the 2010-11 permit revenue estimates. This is also contained in the budget, in the agenda backup material. The staff proposal includes a 35% wage reduction in capturing 75% of permit revenue over $865,000. Safe Bill expenditure proposal includes approximately $40,000 per year for non-permit-related work. So looking at the green column there, once again, based on the $887,000 revenue assumption, Safe Bill's expenditure proposal was for $748,500. The staff expenditure proposal, $774,994. The initial Safe Bill expenditure savings was approximately $26,500. Then we have to look at some other factors here. Additional Safe Bill reimbursements for rent, administrative fees, computers, vehicle rental will generate another $91,000 per year to the city. The 20% Safe Bill revenue fee capture, this portion that we get out of the revenue is So the Safe Bill savings is approximately $295,000. And we took a look at, well, there's also some excess of revenues over/under expenditures for the staff proposal based on $887,000 in revenue and their proposal of $775,000 roughly, which had a savings of approximately $112,000. By subtracting that, the difference between the two, there's still a net Safe Bill savings of almost $183,000 in the first year. We then asked the Building Department to look at some other revenue assumptions based on permit revenue of $700,000 a year, $800,000 a year, and $1 million a year. And those next columns break out the same type of information on Safe Bill's cost, what the Building Department said their cost would be, and so forth. On $700,000 in revenue assumptions, the net Safe Bill savings grows to about $481,000 per year. Under $800,000 in revenue, the net Safe Bill savings is $321,000. And on $1 million in revenue assumption, it's $203,000, net Safe Bill savings, $203,488. The, one other observation, that at no revenue level will the staff expenditure proposal generate a more favorable return than Safe Bill. Are there any questions? I could answer those.
Questions? Council this time? Councilwoman Kerwin?
Just an observation, that there's no way to be more efficient than the turnkey or as-needed operation at this point. We're nearly built up. The number of requests coming before us diminishes each year, and at this point, Mr. Lamorato, as you stated, there would be no give-back that would be enough to match an as-needed basis. Is that clear?
Well, I think you can, at some point, there would be a give-back if you want to give up 70 or 80% of your wages or so possibly.
And that's what we're talking about.
But, well, I'm not sure of that exact percentage, but in no staff proposal or, in reviewing both of these, there was no revenue level, high or low, that the staff proposal could be more beneficial to the city.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Councilman Howarla?
On the additional Safe Bill reimbursements, rent, admin fee, computers, and vehicle rental, why are you adding that back to the comparison when it's already included as in these? You've already done that by including that in the staff expenditure proposals. I see on your spreadsheet here, you have internal service fund charges included in that. At least it appears to be.
There are no, there are no core service charges to the current Building Department proposal. They do have charges for computers and vehicle rental. The Safe Bill is not, that $748,500 is just the cost based on 80% of the revenue. Over and above that, they are reimbursing us for core service cost, building rental fees, computers, and vehicle rental.
Right, and I'm looking at your, the $774, what is that number there? Excuse me. The $774,994, and I'm going over here to other service charges. I see computer services, computer, computer services consultant. I see vehicle, let's see here, I see what you did here. Vehicle rental motor pool. And so are those the things that you're counting here towards the staff, or excuse me, towards the $91,000 on the Safe Bill side of things?
It's those in addition to, we are being reimbursed for core administrative cost, and also for building rental, which the Building Inspection Department is not charged for. And how we came up with our core administrative cost is we took the core service departments that provide services to these areas of the city manager's office, legal department, purchasing, human resources, finance, and risk management, looked at their total budgets as a percentage of the total budget for the city. We then applied that to whatever percentage of the building inspection budget is of the total cost. Building maintenance, utilities, janitorial services were all based on a square footage charge, which are charged to all other buildings in the city. So those, plus the computers and vehicle rental, came up to the $91,000 per year that we are being reimbursed by Safe Bill.
Right, and under the staff proposal, it looks like you've built in, or you already have a... And under the staff proposal, it looks like you've built in, or you already have a vehicle rental charge. So what I don't understand is why you're, you're, if that's already included as part of the staff expenditures, why you're actually adding on to that as part of your ninety-one? So I guess my question to you is what is included in that ninety-one by category?
It's, it's not being added to. The staff has, those are the cost. Those charges on the spreadsheet there are the cost for that department based on normal charges for that, that department. We're showing this as additional revenue to the city of the ninety-one thousand that SafeBuild will be paying us.
Right. But you already have that built into your cost structure, and therefore, in order to compare apples to apples and oranges to oranges, you would actually need to back that out of the staff proposal because you're, you're saying that staff is not including those charges and SafeBuild is. You already have them in, in the expenses here. You have to back them out. You're double dipping.
No, that's not what I'm doing. The staff, the staff.
Can you break down the ninety-one thousand? Because we've already got twenty-nine, six-forty in motor pool.
The computers are, there's about twenty-seven-hundred dollars per computer and times the number of computers that they have, the, I don't know if I have the exact cost on the administrative
Because in, in this model here, we already have eighty thousand dollars in essentially overhead charges.
Councilman Haralak, you're looking at item seventy-nine, forty-three, the vehicle rental motor pool?
I am, yes.
Right. On, on the spreadsheet that comes after the green chart on the next one.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not having, I'm having a problem following the question. The cost, the cost are what the Building Department, their budget is based on. This is additional revenue coming to the city, which SafeBuild is paying us.
Right.
Ninety-one thousand for those. So there's no double dipping. That is a cost, if the, if the staff proposal was selected, the seven-seventy-four, nine-ninety-four is what the cost would be, including those items. If SafeBuild is selected, we're going to get the ninety-one thousand plus a hundred-and-seventy-seven four from our twenty percent of the fee, plus there's a difference in the savings between the Building Department budget and SafeBuild's budget.
Right. But you've already got that included as charges to that department in the amount of eighty thousand dollars. It's down here under other service charges, is it not? Page four-seventy-one of the Agenda Packet.
That's, that is, that is a total for all of their other service and charges, which, that is their proposal. That is what the Building Department submitted to us.
Right. And that's what they're, essentially, they're reimbursing the city eighty thousand dollars for those charges.
Well...
And, and, and your presumption here is that they're not reimbursing anything, so that's where the double counting comes from.
It's...
And, and that's why I wanted the breakdown to the ninety-one, because I wanted to ascertain what, what you were doing, and I can't do that because I don't know what the ninety-one includes.
I, well, I basically said what it includes. It includes the vehicle rental, IT charges, building space for utilities, building maintenance, and it also includes the core administrative charge, which is not on the department's budget.
So we've already got sixty-two, we've got contractual services general, computer services, excuse me, computer services, computer. We've got communication, mobile phones. We've got printing, books and magazines, vehicle rental, motor pool. That sounds like vehicles to me. Miscellaneous insurance, other, membership dues and dues, education and training in general, and other.
Those, those are their expenditures, which will be paid out. Those aren't all going to the city. Those are actually whatever, mobile phones, we don't, they provide, they pay to our carrier. That's what their costs are. These costs are the same costs that SafeBuild would have in their budget and whatever they have to pay for those certain services.
Right. And again, the, the city, the city's motor pool is receiving under this proposal twenty-nine, six-forty. That's part of your, that's part of your ninety-one.
Right.
That's double dipping. You've already got it included as a reimbursement on the staff proposal, and you're adding it back again.
We are getting additional money from SafeBuild for those.
You're getting, it's right here on the staff proposal. The staff is paying the city twenty-nine, six-forty. Building Department, internal service charge, motor pool charge to the department.
Well, I guess I just don't agree with your assumption, or I don't know if anybody else does. I don't agree with that.
That's basic governmental accounting. You've got the motor pool charging the department. The city is getting that money. It's a governmental accounting. Department pays the Internal Service Fund twenty-nine, six-forty. So it's already included as, as a receipt to the city from the department.
I'm looking, we're looking at the total cost of each proposal. The cost from the Building Department for all of those services is seven-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars, which includes the motor pool, includes IT. SafeBuild's expenditure proposal is seven-fourty-eight-five. And I'm saying then, over and above that, we are being reimbursed ninety-one thousand dollars for all these other miscellaneous charges that we're being...
And I guess at the end of the day, really, what we're looking at is, is, is our cost is eighty percent of revenue plus the, the fee, the ninety-one that we get from the SafeBuild. Is that a, probably the best way of looking at it? Because we're, we're only paying eighty percent of our revenues, right? Because we're getting the twenty.
Right.
And we're, in addition to that, we're getting the ninety-one.
That's correct.
And so essentially, that's money in the bank to the city, for sure, under SafeBuild, and that's probably the best way of looking at it, what you say.
Yeah, that's how, yeah, that's how I thought it was portrayed.
Are there further questions on this item?
Mayor?
Councilman Slater?
I, I see this as a moot point. I think I was told that the employees do not have a proposal tonight. If that's the case, then we cannot accept a proposal that is not there. So I think it's a moot point, and I'm ready to vote.
Um...
Unless I misunderstood somebody, we do not have an employee proposal tonight. Is that correct?
There was written information given on a proposal, but then when the employees were asked if they, in that department, if they would agree to that, there weren't, it wasn't an agreement, so therefore it was...
So we don't have, we don't have an employee...
But we had the information because we requested all of it in there.
You're correct, Councilman Slater.
Yeah. Now, we have a resolution in front of us with a, as amended.
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Kerwin?
Just a question for the attorney. Is the suggested resolution that's listed here, one that legal suggests be substituted by striking those from before?
We had the original resolution, which was moved and seconded, and then there's suggested one.
If I may, I, I'm not sure that I see the difference. I'm wondering if perhaps the clerk suggested some changes to that. I'm not sure who amended the resolution.
Do you know, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Right off, I, and this is really probably a question for the manager, but I see the removal of the eighty-twenty prorated addition in the first resolve, and that is not in the second because it's already incorporated into the contract.
Correct.
And that is the difference, I believe, for that's the manager.
So it would, it would appear that the one that's listed on the document you're holding, for our city attorney, page three.
Correct. The language has been included, the eighty-twenty, which is something that was negotiated, so there have been revisions to the contract.
And, right. And then the, turn to page four, you'll see that the resolution is amended, was moved by yourself and seconded by Mayor Patrick Fleming.
So my question is, I'm wondering if, if that's the one we're going to act on or whether we would strike that as the suggested resolution on page three. I'm looking for direction from the clerk.
Mrs. Bartholomew?
The correct procedure would be to make a motion to amend by, by striking the first resolution in its entirety and substituting the second in its entirety.
Okay. Go ahead.
Resolve that Troy City Council hereby amends pending resolution for Building Department services by striking it in its entirety and substituting it with the following. Resolve that Troy City Council hereby awards a three-year contract to provide complete Building Department services submitted by SafeBuild Michigan Incorporated of Clarkston, Michigan, as a result of best value process, and which the Troy City Council determines to be in the public interest to expire June thirtieth, 2013, with an option to renew for two, two additional years, provided SafeBuild Michigan Incorporated has met all the contract terms and conditions in accordance with the professional service agreement dated June seventh, 2010, a copy of which shall be attached to the original minutes of this meeting, and be it further resolved that the award is contingent upon submission of proper proposal contract documents and all other specified requirements. And be it finally resolved that Troy City Council hereby authorizes the mayor and city clerk to execute the documents on behalf of the city of Troy.
Move with second?
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Kerwin, seconded by Councilman Slater, that we approve the resolution as printed in red. Discussion? They vote? Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schelling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fleming?
Yes.
Haralak?
No.
Motion passes.
Mayor?
And, oh, we have the proposed resolution as amended. Yes, Councilman Haralak?
I, I just want to make a brief comment about the staff proposal. And I gotta tell you, I think we'd be, we're crazy not to accept it. And clearly, if, if some individuals in that department don't want to accept the proposal, then, then certainly nobody is forced, you know, they're obligated to, or they're not obligated to work for the city. But the people that have signed on to it have shown a tremendous dedication to the city. And for me, and I were in a position of an employer, and somebody offered to do that for me, that kind of dedication, I would be crazy to look that gift worse in the mouth. I mean, these people are showing that they love the city so much that they're willing to sacrifice so much of their income in order to continue working here. They have a vested interest in providing service to that extent. I want them on my team. And so you're not going to get that with SafeBuild because SafeBuild clearly does not show that level of dedication. They can't. So that's my, my two cents. And I'll be voting against the resolution. I want to thank the Building Department for their years of service to the city as well.
We have a resolution as amended that is before us. And in voting for this resolution, I feel that the City Council has done the due diligence of asking the questions, asking for staff to come back with more information, looking at everything. And we are not discounting the service of the Building Department employees over the years, and we're very hopeful that many of those employees would take employment in, with, with SafeBuild. This is new ground for us in privatization, but one that we anticipated would ultimately help us to serve in a better capacity the needs in that particular area. And so even though this has been difficult for all of us, I think it is a necessary step. And I appreciate the fact that the Building Department employees had an opportunity to present something if, if they wished to, and if they, if they didn't wish to, that that was up to them. And with any other departments, if we're going to do privatization, that they be given opportunities because that's what we said was going to happen. I, I have a feeling that from the comments made by other entities that have, had SafeBuild, and that we will have the service that we need in the Building Department. We'll, we'll have some rebuilding in Troy, you know, even though we're ninety percent build out. And there will be things that we need to be looking at along the way. Any other council comments before we have the vote on the amended resolution? Okay, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schelling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fleming?
Yes.
Haralak?
No.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Motion passes. Then we'll go to item, and I assume that, oh, you want to take, yes. Last time, we didn't take the break, and we went to nine-forty-five. So we'll take a break now, and then we'll go to G2, which will be the golf course operations. We'll take a ten-minute break. Return here then. Second session, and we're on to G2, which is the standard purchasing resolution. Eight, best award, best value award for the golf course operations. And we received voluminous information on this. And Mr. Zerlay, would you like to begin?
Thank you. I'd like to turn this matter over to our purchasing director, Susan Leirstein, who did most of the work on this item.
Okay. Ms. Leirstein?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. I basically want to provide you an overview tonight of the process that we went through to get to where we are. We have new people on the council, and I want to make sure they understand how we got there. Tonight, you have an opportunity to change the way we do business in the city of Troy. It's no longer good enough to provide services while controlling costs. We have to find ways to do more with less. We performed a make versus buy analysis, which is a structured decision-making process to determine if a public sector service should be provided in-house by public employees, which is a make decision, or contracted out for delivery by a specific buyer or supplier, which would be your buy decision. Not all services will be candidates for outsourcing. However, areas generating revenue appeared to be best suited for further consideration, and therefore, the privatization effort was pursued for the building department and golf course operations. To that end, a single-step procurement process was utilized for the golf course, better known as a request for proposal, an RFP, than later on, as a two-step methodology for building department services. In either method, price is usually not the primarily evaluation factor, and allows for the negotiation of all terms, including price. Specifications for the golf course were developed last summer. RFPs were solicited, and proposals with detailed pricing received on December 3rd, 2009. These proposals were publicly opened, however, the evaluation committee members were not allowed to attend. The submittals from the firms were evaluated against pass/fail criteria. A sample business plan was a mandatory requirement in the pass/fail phase, and since Billy Casper Golf was the only firm to submit one, the requirement was subsequently waived to allow all firms to be evaluated. The three members of the evaluation committee independently rated these proposals, then the top three firms went on to the interview phase. During the interview with Billy Casper Golf, questions were raised about how the annual return to the city could be structured. It was evident Billy Casper Golf had submitted a management-based proposal, one whereby the city and Billy Casper Golf agree to an annual budget and program. The execution of the budget and operations is completed by the contractor. The contract with Billy Casper Golf includes a monthly management fee, incentives for exceeding proposed revenues, which are capped at 20% of the base management fees, currently $27,000, and penalties for failing to reach a net operating income threshold of $265,000. The contractor will collect all the revenue and pay all the expenses associated with golf operations. All revenues over expenditures, less any incentives, will be transferred to the city. To validate how the annual return could be structured because of outstanding bonds on Sanctuary Lake, our bond counsel was contacted, and he responded with his opinion. Basically, to preserve our tax-exempt status on the bonds, compensation to the provider could not be based on a share of net profits from golf course operations. Once this was discovered, the scoring for the pricing phase became irrelevant, and the finalist, Billy Casper Golf, was selected based on best value. During the entire process, notices were sent to firms as they were eliminated. Once the finalist was determined, employees were allowed to compete against the best value proposal. They submitted their first proposal on March 22nd, and a best and final offer on May 26th. An overview of the analysis, and can I have that up on the screen somehow? This is the analysis that we did. Shows actual revenues over expenditures for physical year '08, '09, and '09, '10, which takes us through May 31st of 2010, that's those top two figures there at the top, being compared to the employee's current proposal, which is in, highlighted in yellow, and Billy Casper Golf's, which is highlighted in green. None of these figures include the restaurant revenue from Sylvan Glen, and is less depreciation and debt service on the expenditure side, plus any capital expenditures.
Right, and this is on page 27 of this agenda.
In the packet, right, yeah.
If people are going to it in their computer.
And those costs were not included, because they're going to be constant in either proposal. As we can see, the employee's proposal is very aggressive, and more than doubles their operating income over previous years without a full-time golf director. Past practice is a best indicator of future performance, employees' words. Billy Casper Golf guarantees a net operating income that will not fall below $265,000 per year, but is anticipated to be higher each year. These expenditures can be controlled under either proposal, employees or Billy Casper Golf's, and is set by the approval of the budget process. The approach to the whole golf experience will be presented this evening by Billy Casper Golf, and will illustrate where Troy needs to be. If you don't have any questions, I'd like to call on Mike Cutler to prepare his presentation.
Are there questions from councilwoman Mrs. Leirstein at this point? That's mine. Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. Thank you for allowing me to come and speak about our company, Billy Casper Golf, and our vision for Sanctuary Lakes and Sylvan Glen. Little bit about us, we play a lot of golf at our facilities, 6,000 employees, we're big into database tracking, we've got a million and a half unique golfers in our database, and we do more municipal golf courses than anyone else in the country. What's not up there that's important? We are privately owned, so what that means is we don't have someone telling us, you need to go do this, or you need to go do that. We get involved where it makes sense, and we can provide value and benefit. Also being privately held, it's allowed us to develop systems and processes, invest in a lot of time and money and resources into building the best model, operating model out there, so that we're able to achieve results when others haven't been able to. We're located throughout the country, our headquarters is the blue dot in northern Virginia. That is where we perform a lot of the centralized functions, marketing communications, IT support, payroll, HR, accounts payable, accounting functions. The red dots represent our regional offices, and that's where we place our regional agronomist, operations manager, and marketing manager. So they're on the ground, living it, breathing it, touching it, tasting it. They're out there in the field every day. Our approach for Troy, quite simply, we've got to create wow moments. I don't know if you're aware, but Sanctuary Lakes, revenues are declining, and it's not because of course conditions. It's because we're not creating wow moments out there, the experience is not as good as it should be in order to win that price-value proposition. Consistent quality course conditions, they're pretty good at both facilities. Consistent quality course conditions, they're pretty good at both facilities. I commend the superintendent and the crew. But those two factors right there, that's the price-value proposition. Targeted marketing, you have to market to each and every golfer specifically. Just so everyone's aware, golf's not growing. There are not new golfers being created. Golf's been flat for the last seven, eight years. So if you're going to grow your rounds and revenue, you have to go steal golfers from other golf courses, or get the ones that are playing you to play you more often instead of somewhere else. What are those three things going to lead to? Increased revenues and more money in your pockets. What have our clients been saying when we've used that approach? City of Cincinnati, two things I'd point out, they talked about how we created a revenue culture and how we did volume marketing without compromising price or value. What did that look like? Over the course of seven years, a million dollars in growth, really, the last six years, there was a flood in '03, one of the courses was closed partially. The red bar actually is when another operator operated the facility, the blue bars is under our management. Another municipality, city of Tulsa, '07, they were ran by another operator. '08 and '09, those are our results. What's not up there that I would tell you is they went from about a $900,000 loss to, at the end of fiscal year '09, the broke even. That was increasing revenue by about $700,000, $650,000, and right sizing the expenses. City of Chicago, six golf courses in a driving range in downtown Chicago, red bars represent another operator, the blue bar represents our results. Again, that's a 30% increase in rounds and a 30% increase in revenue. Pretty unbelievable results at all three facilities, all throughout the country. But what they do have similarities is there's an economies of scale because there are multiple facilities, and they are in a compressed market where rates are relatively compressed. You don't have a lot of volatility, a lot of upside. The wow moments I talked about, how you go about creating those? For us, it all starts with our guest vision statement. Three things that every employee has to know, and they are jobs, one, two, and three each and every day. Job four may be washing carts. Job four may be mowing the greens, but these are jobs one, two, and three. You've got to create fun and enjoyment. That's what it's all about, because if they don't enjoy it at your facility, they're going to go somewhere else. Positive attitude is your responsibility. And I create loyal guests with my team. Those is the, excuse me, and my attitude and my actions. Those three are the bedrock of our company. They then lead into ace the guest experience, professionally-done training program. It's all about purpose versus function, creating a fun and enjoyable experience. That's your purpose there. That's not your function. And making sure that the staff understands what the purpose is, because we've got to win that price-value proposition in each and every one of our facilities. That's the only way we're able to achieve those results. This training module is based on nine touchpoints throughout their golf experience. At each module, we go ahead and set it up so that they can see how the interaction's supposed to take place, what's acceptable and what's unacceptable. Because you'll find that your lowest-paid employee or your volunteers are spending more time with your customer than your highest-paid employees, and that's kind of the opposite of what you want. So how do you make sure that they are a direct representation of you and the right experience is taking place each and every time? And then we mystery shop it. We go ahead and we tie our general managers incentive to the mystery shop score. 88% is necessary in order to achieve your bonus for the year. It's independent, and we go ahead and share it with all of our staff so we can celebrate the successes and use it as a training tool. And it's, the mystery shop just isn't yes, no, yes, no. What's really important is that the seven different areas, you go ahead and are able to read specific information and share it with your staff as a learning tool. Hey, we didn't do this right, we need to fix this, or, boy, that was awesome. You know, way to go, John, you did a tremendous job there handling the customer, that was perfect. You did the upselling. You took care of them. And then finally, we try to get as much feedback as we can. We give the customer every opportunity to reach out to us and let us know what's going on, what we're doing right, what we're doing wrong. And then this is shared via the Internet and WAV files with the regional manager, the operations manager, the general manager on site, so very transparent, everyone knows what's going on. Targeted marketing, the other opportunity to really drive revenue. We start out with data capture. What I would point to here is golfers two, three, and four, everyone says we may capture data, but unless you get the data for the golfers in two, three, or four, you're only getting 25% best-case scenario. Again, our managers are incentivized, as is the staff on the data capture, because once we capture their data and start tracking their playing characteristics, we can then market to them specifically. For instance, Wade, you play once a month, weekend mornings. We're going to send a different message to you via the system automatically than we may send to Dane, who plays every Tuesday religiously. So it's not a shotgun approach. It's very specific, this is what we're going to do. And what this allows us to do, it allows us to really change the behavior or reward the behavior that we want and fill the open tee times, because that's inventory, that if you don't sell that tee time, it's gone. It's irreplaceable. So you need to go ahead and sell that inventory, that tee time, to maximize your revenue. Through our system, GuestTrack, in the database, we're able to track who our low-volume golfers are and their velocity of play, so that if you play three times a year, we're going to know it, and we're going to be able to predict your behavior within a month, and then we're going to be able to promote to you to try to accelerate that behavior and increase the revenue. Again, this is how we were able to create some of those results that we did. Initiators, those that are making the tee times. 25% of your population is making the tee times for about 80% of your golfers. So you need to treat that initiator differently in the message you send them than the three that are tagging along, or the seven or eight that are tagging along. At-risk golfers, how you know those that you're about to lose? Are you tracking their velocity, and are you able to send a message to them, specific to them, and invite them back and potentially right or wrong? GuestTrack, our database mining software, this is very simplistic, but it'll give you an idea. And I picked a golf course, and at our 115 facilities, it is pretty much standard across the board. That if you, a golfer only plays you one time, the chance of them playing you next year is about one in three. Now, if you can get them to play you a second time, the odds of them playing you again basically have doubled. That's how important that second round is, and all you're trying to do with GuestTrack and this database system is market to them specifically and get them to play you one more time. Just think of all your unique golfers, and let's say it's 7,500 people at your facility. If you got them to play Sylvan Glen or Sanctuary Lakes one more time as opposed to one of the competitors, that would be 7,500 at an APR of $35. That's a big number. $275,000 roughly. Here are some of the automated messages that GuestTrack's able to send out once people are in our system. 12:01, after someone plays the first time, they get an automated message inviting them back and a predetermined discount, getting them to come back, because that's how important that second round is. Happens automatically. This is an example of the low-volume golfer I talked about, the two through five. We identified the people that were playing us two to five times and tried to accelerate their play so that we could go ahead and capture as many of their rounds prior to July, knowing that we'd get them to play more in August and September, so they'd play that fourth, fifth, or sixth round with us instead of someone else. That actually, at Oxford Greens, led to an increase of about $100,000. And that was specific just to the golfer that their velocity pattern is two through five times a year. And then the at-risk golfer, this is another revenue stream. We realized we were losing these golfers, they hadn't played us for three months, we sent out a kind of a cute promotional piece inviting them back, and it's revenue that potentially we would have lost or not realized was gone. Community inclusion, you're competing for time, you've got to give people a reason to come out, whether it's with their kids, or women in golf is one we've used very successfully. And that is, women are the untapped market. And for instance, in Chicago, we introduced about 400 women to golf our very first year, and we've, this was in 2004, and we've since retained 200 of them at our golf courses, almost 50%. We broke down the barriers, leaned on our vendors to help get them the equipment at a very reasonable price, and gave them the opportunity, the time slots, and camaraderie to get them to come out. Something we've been very successful with across the country, not just Chicago, but that was a good example. Player development programs, I see this as a real opportunity at Sanctuary Lake at the driving range. That's a program that you set up where it's so much a month, they can come use the driving range free, but for this monthly fee. But what you also do is you fill the tee times in the evening with this program. So for instance, you'd set up this program, and then after 5 o'clock, you could go ahead and play for a reduced rate or cart fee only. And what you'd start doing is you start filling tee times, and I use 5 o'clock, maybe it's 6 o'clock, but you start filling tee times that would have went underutilized.
Will you still be, will you be using the program that's in place now where the students play?
No, ma'am. We had the database, the capture.
No, I mean, that we have going in Troy here, where the students.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
And the senior program too?
Yes, ma'am. And then we're going to add on to those programs as we move along. And then PR, you've got to communicate and create exposure. This is a program we did in Washington, DC, very inexpensively leveraged our contacts, Beauty and the Beast, tied it into a promotion at the golf course, and we were able to increase, have the biggest July and August they ever had in our first year of operation. Finally, we try to get as much money to the bottom line. We go ahead and negotiated national accounts with all these vendors. We do not care necessarily which one the golf course uses, we just want to maximize the benefit. All discounts, all savings are passed along directly to the golf course. It's essentially cooperative buying among 120 golf courses. Finally, why us? Proven track record, we've done it over and over and over. No one has the marketing technologies that we have or the guest-centric approach. A lot of them are trying to duplicate it. We're three or four years ahead of everybody on the marketing technology. It's not even close. Municipal experts, we do more municipal golf than anyone. We're used to the nuances of the city, the importance of the asset, and improving the amenity, and really creating value and opportunity for all of the residents. And finally, the financial guarantee. Our upside is very limited, and we've basically guaranteed more than has been done in the last few years by the staff. I mean, I don't know else to tell you.
Do you have questions, Mayor Perot, Tim Fleming?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Excellent presentation, by the way. You seem to focus on individual golfer. What is your approach and your plan for marketing to corporations or to golf outings? Example, our Chamber of Commerce takes their golf outing outside the city of Troy, and I'm sure they have good reason. Our Troy Foundation for Educational Excellence, our schools, take their golf outings and fundraisers outside the city of Troy. I think it's because after you play the golf, you don't have anything to, have a banquet facility and so forth. Can you do something with a tent, or do you have any plans to market to corporations to major golf outings?
Absolutely. I believe Sanctuary Lake has to be outing central, quote-unquote. When we talked about mystery shopping, what I didn't talk about was the mystery shopping we do of our sales individuals and our staff members on site. I would tell you the fact that at the golf course level that are out, you know, the general manager, the golf professional, that's making the sales call and trying to recruit and book the outings moving forward. So we track that, and then we mystery shop to that and train them to sell as best they can. That is, if we're going to achieve our results, that's going to have to happen, and we cannot have City Council, or not City Council, Chamber of Commerce taking their outing outside of the city limits. And, you know, that's not acceptable. I'm a PGA professional, I used to run golf courses in the southeast for our company, and that's, you just couldn't have that. You had to own that piece of the pot. You've got to. And quite frankly, if you don't, that's very tough, regardless of tent, regardless of necessarily facility, because you have the overhang at Sanctuary Lake, and you could add a tent to do it. Someone needed to be paying attention and making sure on the sales effort that that happened. So either it wasn't happening, or you were losing the price-value proposition. Yes, sir.
Further questions? Councilwoman Kerwin? Oh, remember, I wasn't on Do Signals, you got to see me.
I'm Madam Mayor.
Sometimes I miss people, I'm looking this way and looking that way.
Well, I'll do a follow-up, and then I kind of want to go in a different direction. But I will say that the quality golf experience is what the mission statement currently is for our golf division. That's what we're looking for. And I do agree with Councilmember Fleming that the focus on the guests, that guest experience fits well there. I am also attracted to both your service standards and your service behaviors specifically, the way that those are specific and the way that that's what you look for. And I would like to say that I see a lot of the service standards and service behaviors in our current employees. And so I ask at this time again that they will have an opportunity, should this contract be awarded, to be interviewed for these jobs.
Yes, yes, ma'am. We believe you've got a lot of good people.
Including the grounds.
Yes, ma'am.
The grounds are well-maintained.
Especially the grounds. That was.
Now, I'm going to go in a different direction. Adjacent to Sanctuary Lake Golf Course is the last Lake Prairie, and that's a very sensitive area, sandy in soil. And the city has been well-aware of how important it is to guard that nothing creeps into the Great Lake Prairie. Carol Anderson is here as well, has worked very hard in terms of fertilizer or weed control, insecticide, all of those things are used carefully. I've read all of your documentation, I know many of us did, some 400 pages were included in here, about the auto-bound standards. So I'd like to hear from you and assurance that you have an understanding of the value of that Great Lake Prairie and that all protections will be guaranteed in terms of anything seeping in. Can you give that?
Yes, ma'am. I was made aware of the hydrology issue, the concern at the Great Lake Prairie. Again, it boils down to, I don't know whether it's nutrient loading specifically, I'm guessing it is because it ties back to hydrology, as opposed to the chemical or insecticide runoff. Some of those don't necessarily run that much. You can add sticker, is the generic term, but to keep it in place. I suspect it's nutrient loading. As you mentioned, half of our facilities are auto-bound certified. Our goal is 100%. We're very supportive of that, and you will have our commitment that nothing will happen to that.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Further questions?
Mayor?
Councilwoman Harala?
Yes, let's see. Could you tell me within the last five years if there are any golf courses that you used to operate or maintain that you don't, no longer do now?
Certainly. I went through this, there's seven golf courses in the last five years that we no longer operate. None of them, either the contract ran its course and we decided not to continue, or it was on our default where a developer went under, so to speak.
And, let's see here. Is it the intent of Billy Casper Golf to run any other municipal golf courses in the state of Michigan this year?
This year? No, sir.
Or next year?
We're looking at it, I mentioned to the city staff, we look at Michigan as an opportunity. We see a lot of mom-and-pop operations and not a lot of necessary sophistication in this market. So we think there's opportunity there for us to grow this area, and that's what attracted us to one of the items. So I can't say never, but right now, there's nothing on the radar, per se.
Sure. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Are there any municipal courses that you've, that you are no longer running, or once you take over a municipal course, you continue?
To answer your question, ma'am, our renewal rate is exceptionally high. It's probably the highest, and in fact, it is the highest in the industry. The one that comes to mind is the state of Mississippi. We no longer run those, and that's because we chose not to. They asked us to, and we.
What was the reason why? That you're able to tell us?
That we no longer, there was a decision made that we did not want to continue because it was a real bad use of our time. it was a real bad use of our time in dealing with the state of Mississippi, and I dealt with them personally, I was the one that oversaw that contract. And dealing with the state at that, that level, it was a lot of different individuals. None of them were on the same page. And year to year, there was a changeover, Democratic governor, Republican.
So, it was a, it was a state course at what, you're not thinking of a city?
No, it was a state course, it was, it was the state government of Mississippi and that was just, it was a little...
But any of the city courses that you've, that you're taking, do you continue? I know you had a lot of references here.
Not that I can think of off the top of my head here recently.
Alright. And you saw the numbers comparing your proposal with the staff proposal?
Literally, I saw it two minutes before.
Oh, okay.
Susan, sorry, I haven't gone through a lot of it. I did notice one thing that thinks off, but go ahead.
Okay. And in my comparing the numbers, they are very close except for the guarantee that you're offering. What was the situation with that guarantee? Was that always part of your proposal from the beginning?
No, when, when it originally started out, we did not propose it that way because as I indicated, the city staff, they were looking for quasi lease in a sense, a backstop, which is where we ended up. But I mentioned, I believe it was Laurie or one of the other city attorneys, that 97-13, the IRS code, the city was gonna be in violation of their tax exempt bonds if they were to enter that structure and that we were really gonna have to manipulate it in order to make this work and meet that to keep your tax exempt status. So, we proposed it one way, thinking that you're not gonna be able to go another direction, what you were originally contemplating. And it bore out as such and then we negotiated backwards to the point that we're at.
Okay, alright. Okay, further questions? Councilwoman Guinness?
Two questions, and one is relating to what you were just speaking of. So you, it was your company or you as the representative of your company that pointed out that that was a potential issue with the contract as it was first presented? And then you reevaluated, was this something that you've encountered before with your other municipal accounts?
Yes, ma'am, I did point it out, we have dealt with it before and we have worked through it with our other municipalities. It gets, it gets really complicated and I don't wanna get into the whole 97-13 and all the nuances of it. I'm not an attorney.
She is.
Well, Laurie, would you like to speak to it?
I just, well, I, and I don't know if you were the appropriate person.
Councilwoman Guinness is also.
I didn't know if you were the appropriate person to discuss that, obviously, it was outlined in our information in terms of, this is also something that we've been preparing for several months in terms of your negotiations and kind of getting an update on what was happening with the bids and, and what that process was looking like for us. So, we knew that there were some technical and legal aspects that had to be dealt with and we've been updated on all of those. I just didn't know personally if this is something that you've dealt with, with some of your other courses, that you're confident in the, we've, that we've gone forward to rectify that issue.
Oh, I understand your question, yes ma'am. We have dealt with it and we now meet the criteria necessary.
My other question was in terms of the map that you had posted up there in your regional offices where they were located, and I think that Councilperson Haralak sort of addressed the line of questioning that I was gonna ask. There were obviously no red dots in the state of Michigan and so, we didn't know if, or I personally didn't know if there were other municipalities that you've contacted or what your plans were in terms of bringing your business into the state of Michigan. But in the interim, not having any of those plans set forward, what regional office would we be dealing with?
We're basing it out of the Chicago office, since there's a direct flight on Southwest regular basis. And that's, that's the staff that's gonna be operating.
Okay. Further questions? Thank you. Oh, Councilwoman?
A couple, a couple areas. The employees are of great concern to me. Is your pay comparable to, do you know what they're making now, their salaries that they currently are?
I, I did not, I did not know the exact salaries because I believe that would be a violation per se of one of the Privacy Acts, but Ms. Anderson, when she went ahead and compared, she said, actually, they're very much in line, in fact, you may be a little bit higher. And a lot of times, we might pay a little bit more because the benefit package, you know, we have medical health, dental, but no retirement, so we have to make up for that in some form or fashion typically.
And did I hear you say something about incentives? Propose incentives for employees?
Yes, sir.
That's a merit system of some kind?
Correct, it's, it's tied both to the mystery shop scores, database capture, NOI, insurance, safety scores, and then missing one, I'll think of it here in just a moment.
You also said that you're gonna maintain programs that are already in place with the golf courses in youth programs?
Yes, sir.
Seniors?
Yes, sir.
Leagues?
Yes, sir.
Is there anything that's currently being done at the courses now that you're not going to do? Any programs that you've seen?
This first year? No. But now, moving forward in years coming, I, we'd like to modify some of them and make them better. I'm not sure I agree with the pricing structure at Sanctuary Lake when you get into it, and I think there's the ability to modify or adjust the pricing at Sylvan Glen, because you've got enough players at Sylvan Glen, you're just not maximizing your yield. So then again, the yield management, T sheet management, some of the programs you put in place. But this year, we are gonna finish out the programs that are in place, finish out the leagues, and then reevaluate, and they are gonna be vital to the success moving forward. We understand that, but we think there's an opportunity to maybe slightly modify them or improve them to improve results. And based on just the few ones, a few with Sylvan and Sanctuary that I just mentioned. But right now, there's no plan in place for any changes.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
We'll see if we have any others as we go along. Mr. Zerlag, was there something else that you wanted to present to us?
No ma'am, just would answer any questions that the council may have.
I know that there is a proposal from the employees. Since we had Representative Billy Casper Golf speak, I think it would be fair to have the employees speak if they wish to.
I would not have a problem with that, Your Honor.
Okay. Someone from the staff wished to speak on their proposal. Still have page 27 open on my computer comparing all the numbers. I'm giving you the opportunity because in my mind, if we have the company that is making a proposal and the staff is also making a proposal, that you should be entitled to speak.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Mayor of City Council, thank you for the opportunity. Totally unprepared, I really didn't expect this. Danny McDonald, I'm the superintendent of Greens. Just what I'd like to point out is what, what our incentive was in, in this whole situation is the fact that knowing that the city was in a situation whereby that they, the debt service was the, was the biggest obstacle. We, we geared our proposal to whereby we decreased operating costs, we looked at different ways in which to save money as far as operating costs are concerned. We looked at the possibility of using agricultural grade fertilizers, generic pesticides. We decreased, we decreased our, our part-time hours, we utilized, hopefully, the, having volunteers working for us. We just looked at all different kinds of ways in which to decrease costs so that we could increase revenues. Now, the three bullet points that were made in response to Billy Casper was the fact that they had a guaranteed revenue to the city, of which our, our counter to that was the fact that based on prior, prior revenues and historical revenues, that we, and what, what we proposed were, were just that. And by decreasing costs, that was the bottom line in which we could present to you tonight. The other, the other thing is, is that in all respect to Billy Casper, they don't counter the market as far as marketing is concerned. We have done our, we, we, we went out and we got a couple of proposals for, from golf course marketing firms. And basically, what we were told was that if you spend approximately 3% to 5% of your total revenues, gross revenues in, in marketing, that you can get a return of approximately 25 to 35%. I think I put this in the, in the follow-up to you, so I don't wanna be redundant here, but the fact of the matter is, is that we can market just as well as Billy Casper can. It's just a matter of fact that, and it's something that we've never really done before. We've never really went outside of our own operations for marketing and it's something that we think that we could, we could pursue and it's something that I think that would be beneficial in, in getting increased numbers to help with that debt service. Lastly, and it was kinda my fault, I didn't present this, but as, as far as capital improvements are concerned, either land improvements or equipment, the city is responsible for all capital improvements. Now, the, my, my point I'm trying to make here is, is the fact that if Billy Casper isn't responsible for any, any amount of money that would go for capital improvements, it's imperative that we try to increase revenues as much as we possibly can in order to have the reserve funds for capital improvements. Case in point, Sylvan Glen Golf Course, the irrigation system is over 40-plus years old. It needs replacement. We're living on borrowed time. The replacement for the irrigation system alone at Sylvan Glen is about three-quarters of a million dollars. Now, I'm not, I'm, I'm not a finance guy, I don't know how much we currently have in our reserve funds, but I can tell you this, that in the event that we need to make that replacement, that's, it's imperative that we maximize our revenues in order to help to pay that debt service, as well as the fact that we can have money in the reserve fund for any capital improvements. Either be it land improvements in terms of irrigation, or in terms of equipment because of the fact that equipment doesn't last forever. We do, do our due diligence as far as preventative maintenance on equipment is concerned, but equipment doesn't last forever. Case in point also is the fact that just a fair way more alone is in terms of about $34,000 in terms of replacement. We have two golf courses, so therefore we have double the amount of equipment which we have to purchase. So hence, the reason why we have to maximize our revenues in order to make that debt service and also have money in our reserve funds for capital improvements, both in land and equipment.
How much time would the employees need to demonstrate that they could do the operations of the golf course and achieve these numbers?
Madam Mayor, I'm thinking, I'm thinking if you would give us two years, two years, one year in which to, in which to get a marketing plan in place and an additional year in which to see how that marketing plan is working, as well as the fact that we've been very weak in our management of, of the golf courses and we have never had really the opportunity to treat the golf course as the business in which it truly is. And we would love the opportunity to treat it as a business and if you give us two years, I think you can see the results of our sweat equity in this.
And what would be the advantages to having the present employees run the golf course rather than an outside firm?
Uh, the, the, again, in all due respect to Billy Casper, I've got 24 years of sweat equity into that golf, into Sylvan Glen alone, and I was there at the opening of Sanctuary Lake. As well as the fact that my full-time employees, as well, as well as, I mean, we've got part-time employees that have worked for us for the last 10, 15 years as well. They, they've got as, about as much sweat, sweat equity into it as we do. It's a career, it's a career for us and it's a, it's a passion and it's, I don't know if you know golf course people at all, but we're passionate about what we do and we, we like what we're doing and we would like to continue doing what we're doing.
Okay, let me see if other council members have questions for you. Councilmembers, do you have questions about what the staff is proposing? No? I guess not?
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Councilmembers, how, would you wish to proceed? Do you have a question? Councilwoman Guinness, I saw you, I saw you scooching up, did you wanna ask a question?
I guess, I'm not quite sure who it would be directed to, but I, when I was reading some of the materials, and this issue of marketing on behalf of the city of Troy came up, really specifically in this last BES proposal, and there was something that was alluded to in there and it also was alluded to tonight when we were able to hear you speak, in terms of a recent decision to, to look outward and, and see what could be done in terms of marketing. And there was also something in the written materials that indicated that we may even have the capabilities to do some of the marketing that we're seeing from Billy Casper with material, software licensing that we already have. And I'm wondering if someone can answer that question for me in terms of what we have available to us already, if this is something we've really taken a hard look at, because I think that that's important for us to know up here in terms of how far we potentially already could be with what we have.
I think that Carol Anderson has been essentially the management of the golf course operations for the past several years and she would be the most qualified to answer that.
Mrs. Anderson, can you come to this microphone instead of that one? Because this one seems to work better, at least for us, I, maybe it's the acoustics of the room. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. We do have some, some software that we have that is available in terms of, or to use for database collection and marketing purposes. We have not made the best use of that software up to this point. Certainly, we do not operate hundreds of golf courses as Billy Casper does. So, I'm, I would suggest that their software is something more encompassing than what we have.
Right, what, yes, because they seem to be having a system where they target individual golfers based upon type of golfer they are, how many times they golf, that kinda stuff. And I don't know, we've never done anything like that.
We have, we have not done marketing to that level, or, or we have not used our database for that. We have, we are somewhat new in, in marketing, thus, the employee proposal asks for, or, puts in their proposal a submission of a marketing plan or hiring a marketing consultant to do some of that work.
Okay. I don't know who's first, can't tell. Mayor Perot, Tim Fleming, go ahead.
The database we have, is it maintained? Do we have information now on the number of golfers that we've had over the last five years with enough detail that we could have a marketing campaign without having to recreate or anything?
Oh, we do. We, we have about, I think, 1,100 golfers in that, in that database currently. We send out newsletters regularly, we have been doing that for about the last year or so, along with... We have been doing that for about the last year or so, along with, but we don't, we have not done targeted marketing up to this point.
Madam Mayor. Councilwoman Kirwan.
Mrs. Anderson, I'm looking at the performance objectives in what was included from 2009, 2010 budget, and all of checkmarks have to do with increasing the revenues and marketing strategies and so on. And it seems to me that as long as I've been serving on council, each budget has had the similar performance objectives in an attempt to get there, and then it has the indicators, the actual and the projected. So we haven't made a great deal of progress along this, and I'm sure you recognize now the point where we are. We keep doing the same thing, but not getting those results that are significant enough. And I'm one who hears a lot from the employees, oh, not from the employees, pardon me, from residents, who talk about their frustration with the idea that we're even in the golf course business. This is something that came out certainly during the millage campaign, what are we doing, and so on. And we know that it's possible to have revenues over expenses, yet the combined courses together, we're not there. And so I think at this point, the frustration over performance objectives indicated yet not met, and inability to use specific guest tracks effectively enough to get that repeat that is the hallmark of successful courses. That was a comment.
Yeah, we are, just to ask the question, we are currently revenues over direct expenses at both courses, but in terms of the debt, we're certainly not covering that debt, nor is it very likely that we're going to cover that debt with a contractor either.
And may I say, an alarm kind of went off when I heard the three-quarters of a million dollar anticipated, because we're not, if that is a potential, then we're not even accruing enough.
Well, we have, we, in our reserve fund for the last two years, we have put money, or budgeted money for the irrigation system, a reserve for the irrigation. I think, if memory serves me right, with the current budget, we will have $600,000 as a reserve for that irrigation.
Thank you for making that.
But of course, it's all enterprise, so, yes.
I'm still looking at page 27 here of the, Mrs. Anderson, where the numbers comparing the Troy employee proposal with Billy Casper Golf are very close, very close. What, do you have, do you have a comment with regard to that? I know that staff is recommending that we award the contract to Billy Casper Golf. My quandary with all of this is, given, if we give staff time to prove that they can do this, do we take away that and award the contract tonight to Billy Casper Golf, or do we give them an opportunity to do that?
Your Honor, I don't want to put the director on the spot.
No, I don't want to put Mrs. Anderson on the spot. Mr. Zerling?
I'm looking around for it.
That's okay, Carol, I'll respond. None of us like the recommendations that we make. Philosophically, not even philosophically, actually, we have the lowest millage rate around for the services that we provide, and we're at the top of our millage. After our layoffs, I'm quite confident that we will also have the lowest number of employees on a per-thousand-population basis. There was, you heard something earlier about a 35 percent reduction in paid, minority of the, a minority of the employees wanted to do that. That would probably, would have made us also the lowest-paid employees in the area. That may be okay with some people, it depends on what kind of employee you want. That said, the objective that we have was to follow city council's directive to maintain our core competencies, police protection, fire protection, and infrastructure maintenance. The golf course recommendation, and we do a great job, we've got great employees, I've worked in a number of cities in more than one state, and I would put our employees, including the golf course employees, up against anyone else. And I'm not just saying that because I'm here now, and so are they in the audience, I'm saying that because it's true. But as Mrs. Leirstein said, when you have to take a look at what our costs are, if you have a, essentially a guaranteed threshold where the subsidy to the, from the general fund of the golf course is not going to exceed a certain amount, and it's guaranteed with the private sector bid, that's hard to ignore, especially when we're looking at revenue shortfalls over the next several years. We just took out, what, $6 million of this budget, John? And the next year's going to be how much more?
Five.
Another $5 million. And you, and I had provided a list in the FYI packet of all the layoffs that we've initiated thus far, not including the Villa Department of the Golf Course. It's going to be just as bad next year. If your charge is to structure the organization, or to restructure the organization, to have the most cost-efficient delivery of services, and you have a proposal that has a guarantee of a general fund subsidy, that's up to you if you want to look at that or not. That's, you know, and it's not staff, it's not management versus the employees, we are all the same organization. And we take a look at what the costs are to provide a service, and where we want to be a few years from now, and how we have to look at budget cycles. So that's where we are.
Right. Councilman Slater?
I guess I'll ask John this question. If we took the city's proposal, the city employees' proposal, who would be in charge of the golf operations?
Carol Anderson.
Who would be in charge of marketing?
Carol Anderson.
That's what I'm afraid of. We got rid of our Director of Golf Operations, so we don't have the, that employee anymore.
No, sir.
Is there any discussion of spreading that amongst the other employees, or ultimately that's going to be Carol Anderson's job?
I'm going to, I'm going to defer that to Mr. Lamorato. Or Carol Anderson.
I think the point I'm trying to make, it's easy to make a proposal, but there are ramifications for the follow-through.
Right.
And I, I think I've gone on record that I want to keep the employees, I want, that is what I want to do, but I have to make a decision, not with my heart, but with my brain. And if we're going to dump all of the, all the responsibility on someone who, and no offense, doesn't have the expertise in those areas, I don't think we're doing a service to the community when we have an option that is almost parallel, that, you know, has a track record, has employees, has marketing, has everything that we're looking for.
And I'm sure what you didn't mean was that you were offended that I would, I mean, that you were afraid that I would take over, that wasn't what you meant, right?
I am, I am afraid.
The employee plan, the employee proposal does, it does have a marketing plan in it that they have proposed at the cost of $40,000, $50,000, savings from the, you know, the original proposal that the employees gave, proposed, included the Director of Golf and his salary. Those wages have been reallocated for marketing plan and implementation of that plan, and additional hours for managers of the pro shops, or managers of the operations. Those would be part-time people, or not full-time, they'd be part-time year-round, but, but full-time during the summer, during the season. But those, those wages have been reallocated, not removed. Correct?
Correct. And also the fact that it would be an actual.
Well, we're going to have to, you know, we keep records, everything, come on. We need you to answer in the microphone.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Yes, it would be a seasonal pro shop manager that would be overseeing both operations at both at Sylvan Glen and Sanctuary Lake, as well as the fact that it would be an actual marketing, a golf course marketing firm, of which we would probably do an RFP or something of that nature, in which that's what they do specifically, is just golf course marketing. That would be geared specifically, much like what Billy Casper had explained, that would be targeted specifically for the players that we have here in southeastern Michigan, and, and that would be, the actual marketing plan would be with a golf course marketing firm. One firm in particular that we were in contact with, they only have 90 clients nationwide, they keep it small because of the fact that they want to give as much attention as possible to each golf course in which, in which they contract. So therefore, if this one firm were in particular to be selected, it would be a small, a small clientele, of which they have 99 percent retention with their clients, just as an example.
Okay, thank you.
But ultimately, Carol, you would be in charge?
Yes, but, and, and you know, this is a little bit of a difficult situation for me to be in, because I'm, I'm
I know.
Doing both sides. So I, I do want to point out that there certainly would be some oversight that I would have in terms of, of the contractor as well.
Right.
Yes, there, there is, yeah, I would be between, yes, there would be, certainly be some oversight with contractor.
Mayor?
Yes.
Ideally for me, I would like to see Billy Casper take over this operation and keep our employees, and pay them as well as they're being paid today. That's ideally what I would like to see, because they've already invented the wheel. I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel, but I do want to give our employees an opportunity to, to keep their jobs. I understand when I hear somebody say that they've sweat, and that they've made it what it is, and that they have a vested interest in, in that golf course, and they are a different breed. And if you are a PGA professional, you understand that, I think, better than anybody. Ideally for me, if our employees went in this deal, it would make it much easier for me.
Thank you. Yes, Mayor Perot, coming, you had a question?
I really think it comes down, I agree with Councilman Slater.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. I may have a question for Billy Casper Golf, but it comes down, the differential is the marketing, a proven track record in the marketing with the data to back it up. But there was one thing that the presenter for Billy Casper said relative to page 27, we've all been looking over here.
Right.
I believe you made a comment that you had just seen it a couple minutes before, but you may take exception to something, and I was wondering specifically what that exception might be on page 27 of the comparison of yours versus.
I don't, I don't think the PTEs were correct on our side, where it was six and 32, and they were five and 44. This is off the top of my head, but I remember thinking it's, it's actually.
Oh, the part-time, okay.
And I may not.
Full-time employees?
Yes, I may not have read it correctly, but it was, I think our, our part-time equivalents are slightly higher, where I believe the total was 40.
It said, full-time six, part-time 32, bound here, zero.
Right, so that's 38, so it would be either 34 or 35 on the part-time equivalent, or the part-times, or the full-time equivalents.
Okay. Mr. Zerling, you?
Yep, Mr. Kettler, and not to put you on the spot, but could you identify for us what the table of organization would look like for the golf operations?
Certainly.
I think it was in here, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Our intention is to have one strong golf professional, Director of Golf, General Manager, and then a secondary one at one of the properties, and vice versa on the superintendent's side. We would have one mechanic that would service both properties, and then, you know, it breaks out as far as the services on the, at the counter staff, and we do that based on the number of hours in each week. You know, so in June, it may be 100 hours of coverage, or 120 hours, not necessarily the number of people, and you have to break it down to full-time.
And so you have counterparts that are co-terminus or commensurate with our own organizational chart? In other words, the employees that we have on staff, there's, there's positions in your organization that they would be qualified to work.
Mr. Zerling, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to have you say that whole thing, I don't know what it is with his mic, but
Did you hear that? I'm sorry.
You're having trouble here.
To answer, answer his question.
No, I want to hear his question.
So if you took your organizational chart, and you took a look at our current organizational chart, we have employees that are, are commensurate in a skill level for what you're looking for in your organization. Is that the correct statement?
Yes, sir. Let me, if we don't show up with a bus and unload a bunch of people, I mean, that's, that's not the case. When we come in and transition our property, good people are hard to find, and you have good people. Some, some might need a little more direction, systems and processes and support, but we try to keep as many of the staff as we can, as it makes sense, you know, based on experience, qualification, you know, and it fits our, our organizational chart, which is very similar to what you all are currently. I mean, when we looked at it, this is how we'd staff it, this is how we'd structure it. So generally, when we do a transition, we actually keep a high percentage of employees.
Madam Mayor. However, they must be able to fit your service standards and service behaviors.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's, you make that very, very clear as you go through.
Yes, ma'am.
And your three specific points, your values, you stress every step.
And if they don't, I mean, if they're, and I'm going to use this example, this is not always the case, but let's say they're volunteers, if they're just there for the golf, well, that's not going to work. We need customer-centric employees, because as I said earlier, people are going to vote with their wallets in their feet, and you're already seeing it.
Any other questions?
So, any other? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have a question?
That, Councilwoman Horak?
No, I have a question for staff.
All right. Councilwoman Horak, had a question for staff?
I do, thank you, Mayor. I just want to make sure I understand the, the numbers here, man. Please do correct me if I'm wrong, and walk us through it, whatever the case might be, but it looks like the pro forma from Billy Casper Golf for the first year for the two golf courses shows revenues over expenditures of 326, 544. Is that correct?
Yeah, John, you can respond, or Susan, who put this together? Do you want to go to the microphone, Susan, if there are questions on the, on the comparison?
Yes, that's, that's correct, that's the number we're looking at up there.
And from that, as far as what the city would obtain, we would take that, but we would have to pay Billy Casper, from understanding this, $135,000, right, for the management fee?
That is included in that number, correct, Mike?
That, that is in that number. Of that 326.
Okay.
That's already been taken, those are management fees we've paid during the course of the year.
I got it.
Actually, for how much, way that it break out of that 326, you get all of them.
I'm sorry?
You would receive all 326.
Oh, right, right, okay, I understand, yep. And so what we're saying is the employee proposal is, is this number up here, that's in the yellow.
The 570, yes.
Right. Okay. Now, my other question is with respect to, I don't want to flip through here and find the page, but in the, in, there's a reference here to, on the bid or on the contract about, and I'm still not clear, so perhaps you could just clarify what items of equipment that the city owns are going to be used, and how much, if any, money we will receive, either in in, uh, annually from, from that equipment.
The way the contract is structured is the equipment that we have currently will be utilized by Billy Casper Golf, and the repair and maintenance on that equipment will be paid for by Billy Casper Golf. They will prepare an annual budget and program, which will include capital improvements, and the city will have to agree to what those items are for the upcoming season. So essentially, we will still be paying for everything through Billy Casper, I mean, actually through Billy Casper Golf, we'll be paying for everything, but essentially, and we'll be getting what's left over, basically.
So, if I understand correctly, um, they're doing the repairs and maintenance, but we're still actually buying the equipment?
They, they will be buying our equipment for us. That'll be part of the contract. It's already, they're, um, included, the lease payments and everything, and the carts and everything are included in their proposal. They will be making those payments. And utilizing the equipment.
All right, I was looking at the, the bid summary, which is on, this is a large packet.
Yes. And I'm going by memory here.
I tried to bookmark these, but I didn't do that. And so, um, I was looking at the different proposals and it, uh, I don't recall seeing any, 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 uh, revenue to the city from, from our equipment, but, or-
No, it's, it's built into their, um, expenditure number, I believe, Mike.
So what you're, so, all right, so what you're saying is the city is not on the hook for any additional equipment expenditures, is that correct?
Not, not unless it's approved in the budget.
All right, so what about the equipment that we have on hand? And since this is an enterprise fund, I mean, the, the equipment that we have that hasn't been fully depreciated, what happens to that?
John, what happens to that?
If, if I might, the contract is a management contract, so anything that is, uh, any equipment that we currently own, we will continue to own. The contractor will use that equipment. New equipment that is needed will be part of the proposed budget that Billy Casper will propose to the city and we will approve. They will pay for it, that equipment, except for capital, although capital is probably gonna be paid for as well, with, in essence, the revenues that are taken in by the operation. The, the revenues and expenses will all funnel through Billy Casper. So there is no, there is no exchange of monies for current equipment, nor is there, um, and, and then when the contract ends, that equipment that we have, in essence, through them purchased, we would own, still own.
Does that answer your question? No.
Well, I, I'm, I'm trying, all right, so, all right, I guess the easiest way is, is in there, um, there's, there's just a lot of different pieces here. The, um, do we have a, do we have a, a net book value of the equipment that we own now?
Uh, we have, um-
Mayor and City Council, we do have a, we have an inventory of all the equipment that's at the course, a purchase price minus the depreciated cost on that. I think what we're doing is that we are letting them, they're gonna use our equipment. They are going to, as it's needed for replacement and so forth, it'll be in the budget, it'll come out of these numbers that we have here, um, and the city will be buying equipment 'cause we want at the end, whether it's at this contract, we want, the equipment will be ours. So if it's the terms of the contract, whatever it may be, we don't wanna be left without any equipment at all, and so we're gonna be buying equipment, they're gonna be maintaining it and so forth, that their expenses that are built into their budget for their operations and maintenance of that equipment, but we will be purchasing any of the new equipment.
Yeah, I guess, I guess the easiest way of getting to where I'm trying to get is, you know, take, take the last full year of operations that the city had, you know, what, what, what were our equipment charges to golf course operations and how does that compare to what Billy Casper's built into their model?
The, um, any of the capital purchases we have, we, we budget for that separately as a capital purchase item. We do, uh, provide for the maintenance and upkeep and so forth as an operating expense of that equipment. So, um, and we schedule those out as, as needed. We don't need a mower every year, but they'll last, and as long as we maintain them, they last several years, so, um, that's basically how we've been operating. Whenever we do need a piece of equipment, we budget for it. If it's a really expensive item, it may be a couple years that we set aside money towards that. It'll be the same, similar type thing, we will still be purchasing that equipment, they will be maintaining it. So whatever the operating expenses for the mechanics and maintenance of that equipment is fairly similar to what each of the proposals are for the maintenance of that equipment for operating expenses.
So in the, um, if I, if I look back at the, uh, into our financial reports for the complete years, I'm gonna see this as an enterprise fund and therefore we'll see and, and, you know, if, if I went and kind of looked at the detailed, um, calculations, there would be a, um, something in there for the annual cost for equipment, if I'm not mistaken, and, um, is that, uh, I'm, I'm trying to ascertain whether or not I'm comparing apples to apples on page twen-, this is page twenty-seven here, because the top two, which are the city's last two years, would certainly include the, that depreciation cost for the equipment. And I don't, I don't really understand where that is in that fiscal year ten eleven for Billy Casper Golf. Because I think that the, that the analysis was just on cash cost.
Yes, I don't believe there, there's no depreciation in, in any of the numbers here. No depreciation or debt service are taken out because we are responsible for that. Of course, depreciation is just a expenditure item, no cash involved, but, um, there's no debt service, but the operations and maintenance, there would be no capital in these numbers. That would be recorded, since it is an enterprise fund, it really doesn't, doesn't show as an expenditure of that fund, it shows it's an addition of assets or assets and fixed assets for that group.
Yeah, that's right.
So it's shown as an asset versus an expenditure there when we do buy new equipment.
Okay, I see where you're getting at. Okay, I guess that answers that. Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions, Council? Are you ready for a resolution? I have a resolution in front of us. If council wishes to go in that direction, or if you wish to go in another direction, you can change it.
Madam Mayor.
Councilman Kirwin?
We resolve the Troy City Council by approves and awards the attached City of Troy Golf Course's Management Agreement for a four-year term to manage Sylvan Glen Golf Course and Sanctuary Lake Golf Course by Billy Casper Golf LLC of Vienna, Virginia, as a result of a best value process in which the Troy City Council determines to be in the public interest and shall automatically renew for one successive four-year period provided Billy Casper Golf has met all the contract terms and conditions in accordance with the management agreement dated June seventh, twenty-ten, a copy of which shall be attached to the original minutes of this meeting and be it further resolved that the award is contingent upon the submission of proper proposal, contract documents, and all other specified requirements and be it finally resolved. The Troy City Council hereby authorizes the mayor and city clerk to execute the management agreement on behalf of the City of Troy.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Kirwin, seconded by Mayor Porton Fleming, that we approve the resolution as printed in red. Discussion?
Mayor.
Uh, Councilman Horlach?
Just curious about the, um, resolution and, um, automatically renew for one successive four-year period, um, yeah, it seems like that's kind of the equivalent of an eight-year contract. I'm, I'm, and perhaps I could just have some clarification about why we're doing it this way?
You want the city attorney to indicate, or the city manager, maybe vote? Mrs. Bloom?
Mayor, I can just tell you what the contract does provide for, and the option to renew is exclusively held by Billy Casper Golf for that second-year term. However, there isn't the ability to terminate for cause throughout the contract, so that is provided, it does provide some guarantees to the city, but as I understand it, the proposal was that they would have pretty much an eight-year term, unless there's a violation.
Mr. Zerlike?
That's, uh, that's my understanding as well, that essentially we get, uh, four years, and there's a review period after four years, the criteria that's predetermined is met, they get four more years, um, and that's why the resolution is structured the way, the way it is.
Okay. Further questions? Comments? Uh, no, we're not taking them from the audience, sorry. I meant from council. People are probably not gonna be surprised at my comment, but I do need to make it.
Is that both ways?
I realize the information is here, uh, but I keep looking at the numbers that are so close, except for the guarantee numbers. My preference is to give the, um, staff a two-year time period to see if they can, um, do what they say they're gonna do. Uh, I do understand about the fact that Billy Casper Golf already has their marketing, um, plan in place, uh, and that they've done this in other, um, areas. Therefore, I will be voting no on this, uh, but I do understand those that will vote in favor of it and, uh, hope that it works out for everybody's best interest. Further comments? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilman Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Shulman?
No.
Councilwoman Fleming?
Yes.
Howard?
No.
Kirwin?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Motion passes. Good luck. Uh, next we are going to go to regular business, um, and the first item is the appointment of the SACRA representative and alternate. Uh, it was designated in a memo to us, um, those people are. Councilwoman Kirwin?
We resolve that Troy City Council hereby designates Tim Ryschnik as the SACRA representative and Mark Miller as the alternate SACRA representative, with terms expiring on June thirtieth, twenty-eleven.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Kirwin, seconded by Councilwoman Horlach, that we approve, um, the resolution, which designate Tim Ryschnik as the SACRA representative and Mark Miller as the alternate representative. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Mayor Shulman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fleming?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
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 Motion passes. Um, H four is amendment to chapter twenty of the Troy City Code, water and sewer rates. Someone wanna move the resolution?
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman McGinnis?
We hereby resolve, the Troy City Council hereby approves an amendment to chapter twenty of the Troy City Code, water and sewer rates, a copy of which shall be attached to the original minutes of this meeting.
We have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman McGinnis, seconded by Councilman Slater, that we approve the resolution as printed in red. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman Fleming?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Kirwin?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. Uh, H five is the City of Troy incentive plan for volunteer firefighters, which basically is the, um, the continuation of the same. No change. Do we have a resolution?
Mayor.
Councilman Slater?
I'll move the resolution as printed.
Support. More reasons?
Uh, moved by Councilwoman, again, uh, moved by Councilman Slater, seconded by Councilwoman McGinnis, is that right? Uh, that we approve the resolution as printed. Discussion?
Mayor.
Councilman Horlach?
Question from management. I see that, uh, we're currently, uh, our multiplier is six hundred and five dollars per year of service, and, uh, what is the, um, you know, if you look back, um, ten years, say to nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand, what was that rate?
I don't know. Uh, perhaps Mr. Lamorato or Chief Nelson does.
Thank you.
Here comes the chief.
Um, I don't have that rate in front of me right now, but I think that, um-
I think the chief is here.
Miss Phil has.
I don't have the specific rates. I believe that, uh, about ten years ago, I believe it was down in the four hundred range. I, I don't have the figures with me. I've had the last three or four years with them, that's about it.
Well, say that's if we look back at your earliest date there.
I, Mayor Council, I believe it was roughly around a, like, two and a half to three percent increase in that rate over the, over the years moving forward for a number of years. We are proposing to hold it at the same rate for the next two years, without any increase.
Yeah, I'm looking at this one here, the last year, it looks like it was four and a half percent increase, and, uh, but if, um, if we can just look at a trend in the, um, if we could just have it as submitted as information, that'd be good. My, my only concern with this is I, I don't know that we can afford this, and so I'll have to vote no to the resolution, but I appreciate, uh, I still wanna find out how we're trending.
We'd be happy to include the last ten years.
Right.
Next is a, uh, is a report communication, the next agenda.
Thank you.
And we still have the fact that we have the volunteer firefighters save us, what, fifteen million every year?
I would not wanna have Sterling Heights' budget for their, uh, full-time department.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, uh, Councilman Kirwin?
Perhaps the savings could be included in that document as well, as the information piece.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Okay, ready for the vote? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman Howard?
No.
Howard?
Yes.
Yes.
Slater? Yes.
Yes.
Senator Fleming? Yes.
Motion passes. Uh, H six is a bid waiver for TASER equipment, police department. Can I get one of those? Uh, [laughing] Mayor Porton Fleming?
You can't have one. But I will move the resolution as printed.
Thank you.
Support.
Moved by Mayor Porton Fleming, seconded by Councilman Slater, that we approve the resolution as printed, without the mayor getting one. Discussion?
Mayor.
Uh, Councilman Horlach?
The, um, perhaps the main issue I have with this is the, um, the ongoing contract and the, uh, concern that I have is that it, um, really should be on an annual basis and, or at least have some sort of a sunset on it, whether that be for three years or five years, and I think that would make the resolution better.
Further discussion? Vote, Mrs. Bartholomew? Oh, sorry.
I think he makes an excellent point. Rather than have this go indefinitely, read this closer, I think we should have some sunset on this, and I would like to amend the resolution.
Should we ask the chief, since he's here? Maybe there's a reason why, sometimes when we ask.
I'm thinking three years.
Okay. We'll see.
Mayor and Council, uh, thank you for the opportunity to answer the question. The Michigan TASER is the only distributor, and based on our studies, uh, they're, they're the sole provider, and there's no financial incentive for us to look at another provider for this. Uh, if, if something was to come up, we would look and do what we could to, say, and get the best value, and then we would come back at that time, uh, and then present the possibility of going with another vendor. This time, you're the only one.
Yes, uh, Mayor Porton Fleming?
Yeah, I, I think that, that's fine, going with this vendor now and, uh, you know, a no-bid situation. The issue is, there's no end date on this. We're doing a resolution and- We're doing the resolution, and we have no timeframe with it. We're renewing every year.
Your honor, city management has no problem having this be a three-year word.
Three years.
We'll take a look in two and a half years and see who else is out there.
Three-year? Okay. We need an amendment to the resolution, then. Councilwoman, Mayor Protem Fleming, you want to amend?
Yeah, I'd like to amend it simply to include a three-year contract. Rather than an ongoing contract, approves a three-year contract for tasers, training cartridges, and accessories from the sole provider, Michigan TASER Distributing of Southline, Michigan, not to exceed 20,000 per year.
Okay. And Councilman Slater, you want to second?
Sure.
You second the original one, okay. Moved by Mayor Protem Fleming, seconded by Councilman Slater, that we amend the resolution to approve a three-year contract. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew, on the amendment and then on the main?
Yes.
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 And the motion passes and on the main resolution?
Councilwoman McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Yes.
That would be no.
Yes.
Mayor?
Motion passes. Councilman Howardla?
The concern I have with this is that when we started doing tasers, when we first purchased our tasers, that we were supposed to get an annual report on the uses, on a number of TASER releases, and whether or not there are any health complications that ensued. And I think we only got one of those. And because of the, because of the questions of its efficacy and safety, that's why I voted no.
Mr. Zerly, may I call on the chief?
Please.
I'll check into that. If that is the case, then if we haven't been providing that, we've been remiss, and we'll correct that. We do an annual use-of-force report within the police department, which goes through all of our use-of-force incidents. We have that documentation, and if we were supposed to provide it, I apologize, we'll look into that matter.
Thank you. And I will follow up. I do like the, obviously, I like the idea of using a TASER instead of a gun because of the fact that somebody's chance of living is probably greater. But I, you know, there are the issues about people with heart defects dying and what have you, so I'm just kind of skittish about the whole thing.
Certainly. We will provide that information. You're absolutely correct, the TASER is much safer for the citizens that we use it on and the officers when it comes to using force. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, H7? Chapter 85, Councilwoman Kerwin?
This is resolution to amend Chapter 85 signs. It resolved that Troy City Council hereby amends Chapter 85 signs as prepared by city administration, a copy of which shall be attached to the original minutes of this meeting.
Do you want to do A and B? Oh, we can't. Do you want to read B, too?
I really wanted to speak to A, ma'am.
Oh, all right.
If I could have a support.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Kerwin, seconded by Mayor Protem Fleming, that we approve the resolution as printed in red. Resolution A?
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Kerwin?
Very pleased to see this come forward, particularly, we've conducted construction along major thoroughfares for a while, but I think this is particularly responsive now, particularly along Rochester Road. And I'm not only happy to see this, I'm happy to see the large signs that the city has placed to indicate the names of establishments, establishments that I didn't realize before. And I would also encourage people to actually visit the establishments along Rochester Road. I don't think there is actually a better time to go. Traffic is moving slowly, you can see things, and people are more friendly than they have ever been. There are great discounts right now in many of the establishments along Rochester Road. And so although people are fearful, although I think that's going to be a big holdup, I've been driving and visiting those establishments with good frequency, specifically because of the constructions, and would encourage others not to avoid the area, but please patronize those establishments because business matters. And those businesses are very worthwhile, and I hope we have the support of council for this.
I've seen those signs before that indicate where the businesses, you know, they put those up. The city has, does a great job making their own, making signs and putting them up. And yes, when I've traveled Rochester Road, I haven't had, it's in trouble, some, on Waddle's Road, it was a little slow, but...
Not anymore.
Traveled. But, anyway, okay. The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Yes.
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 Motion passes. B, on Chapter 60? Councilwoman Kerwin?
We saw that Troy City Council hereby amends Chapter 60, fees and bonds required as prepared by city administration, a copy of which shall be attached to the original minutes of this meeting.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Kerwin, seconded by Councilwoman McGinnis, that we approve the resolution as printed in red. Discussion? Vote, Mrs. Bartholomew? Yes.
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 Motion passes. The consent agenda is next. Do we have anything you want exempted? Hearing none, could we have a resolution to approve all items?
Madam Mayor.
Mayor Protem Fleming?
We saw that all items as presented on the consent agenda are hereby approved as presented, with the exception of none, which shall be considered after consent agenda is printed, so there's no exception.
Do we have a second?
Support.
Moved by Mayor Protem Fleming, seconded by Councilwoman McGinnis, that we approve, with this vote, all the consent agenda items. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have council referrals, council comments, and then we have a closed session vote. Councilwoman Kerwin?
You know, I'm not sure whether it was in something inherent, it could have been in an FYI, where we had received notification that there have been some concerns and complaints regarding the mowing of the county property, and I wondered if it, we might ask management to respond at this time.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Zerly? And I have a comment, too.
Thank you. Mr. Miller, the assistant manager of charges services, is on top of this matter, and he can respond.
Well, he's out there with his lawnmower. I thought he went fishing.
Thank you.
Mr. Miller?
I believe we've been receiving some comment, your lady. I believe we've been receiving some comment from residents regarding the requirement to mow between the property line and the road, which is normally the curb, but not always. There is a report in the agenda package which explains when that was approved, and that is included in the property maintenance code. That will continue to be enforced, but we have asked city council to give us input, and if you would like that requirement amended, we need to then get that input so that we can prepare an amendment, hopefully by the next agenda.
My comment is thus, and I've answered several emails when people have asked, commented about it, and given them my personal experience. As some of you know, I live on the corner of a main road and a side street, and have lived there for 45 years. We have cut the area between the sidewalk and the street all those years. I personally, and am a senior, cut that area now, and it's on Square Lake Road. And I have no problem with going. I face the traffic when I'm coming. Many times, the cars, they'll go over into the other lane, some stay right where they are, and I have a molting lawnmower. I go along, I just mow it. In fact, I mow that part before I do the part, the front of my house, the side and the front. And we've done so all these years. If a person is a senior and has problems with getting their chores done, there is the home chore program that is still in place, is that correct? Home chore program is still in place?
That is correct.
Where they can get help with getting their mowing done. They can also get help with other things, like leaf raking and other chores. So if there is someone who has a physical problem, probably they're not cutting their own grass anyway, they're having someone cut it for them. There are also, many times, there are young people in the neighborhood that want to earn some extra money and make cut. I know for people who aren't used to cutting that area, they say, well, it's one more thing I have to do. But it takes me like five minutes, you know, and we have big yards in Glenmore. And so I think that people should be cutting there. And the point of whether it is a city road or a county road, Mr. Zerly, we were still cutting along there, but not until it got to be, what, 10 inches?
That's my understanding, but again, Mr. Miller can...
That is correct, 10 inches.
10 inches.
Yes.
And it's much easier if people just cut it when it's the regular length, when they're going to cut their own grass and get it done, because it does impact people's properties as far as how it looks, and people who just do it. Many people have done it for years and years before they were required to do it. They would just do it because then it would look the same as their property area. So I don't want to change the rules, because I think if there's someone that has a difficulty where they can't do it for some reason, there are provisions for that. Mr. Miller?
Madam Mayor, I forgot to mention, in the report, we also included the informational bulletin, which we prepared, so when we get questions, we can deliver that through community affairs and the planning department, and building department, and engineering when a question comes up.
Okay.
And, your honor, our intent, if I may, was that although the property maintenance code was passed, I think, last October, and this was a provision that was articulated as a change, because of all the emails that we received, I wanted to have the council take, if you will, have an opportunity to revisit this one area.
I think we have only received maybe five emails. I don't think we received a lot of emails on this, really. And one gentleman who wrote to me about it, I wrote back and explained my circumstances, what I do on mine, and he said, well, you're right. You know, so maybe it just takes explaining it to people. Mayor Protem Fleming?
I see it and can sympathize with people who live on a major street, and also who have a privacy fence between them and the road, because they don't see that, they don't view it. I know if I'm a resident, I've got a privacy fence, I don't consider anything beyond that fence mine, and so I would take exception to having to go outside the fence and mow that. But if you don't have a privacy fence, and as a homeowner, if you're looking at that, I think you really want to mow it or have it mowed. But I see where there might be, we might need to reconsider what we're doing for those people who have a privacy fence in this. I know in some cases, I drive along and I see more than one privacy fence, like maybe Long Lake, and there's a series of them, and no one wants to take ownership of that. And I've seen them on other streets, too. It's not a big deal for me. We've mowed, you know, the street area, it's not an issue for me, but some of the privacy fence, I can sympathize with that on a major road.
Councilwoman Kerwin, and then Protem Fleming? And Councilwoman Slater?
For the newer members, this did come out of a conversation when we were looking at ways to cut back, things that we would agree to cut back, and it came out of a bigger picture of things that we've been doing that the county should have been doing. That's what we were really looking at, it was a realization that, oh my gosh, we were covering for the county again. And I think you can see that it's the intention of this council not to cover for the county anymore, not for the roads, not for their grass, not for a number of those different things. It's the county's responsibility, they haven't had it, we've taken it on, it's been our expense, and that was what the conversation was at this time. I am interested in hearing from the newer council members if you want to have this returned as part of a larger study session item, but when we went through and prioritized what changes we would make in order to deal with lack of revenue, what was important and what was a priority, this was something that that council at that time agreed entirety, in our entirety, on this issue.
Councilman Slater?
Well, that was, I was going to ask what the history, I wasn't part of...
That's how it came.
So I was going to ask for some history on that. Off the top of my head, I'm not sure I agree with it, because I think it does give us unfavorable appearance, let alone some hazard. So I think I personally would like to revisit it and get some information about how this happened and some info for myself.
Mr. Zerly?
Do you want to make this a study item after the next city council meeting?
I think the important factor to know is the cost savings when we're not cutting, because, you know, we're laying employees off, we're privatizing things, you know. I still don't see why, what hurts people about cutting the grass there. It's not like, I don't think it's a big deal.
We'll do whatever the governing body wants us to do.
Right, okay.
Well, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I think perhaps because it's become, it's become an issue where we have citizens that are asking for feedback, and obviously, there have been some complaints from the citizens, maybe it is something to revisit. I have a question in terms of monitoring this. Obviously, I think it may turn out to be something that is more cost neutral, if we're going to have to spend a lot of money tracking down who's doing this and who isn't, and tracking down fines and costs and all these other things, we kind of have to look at that as well. Obviously, I think that there are going to be a lot of people that are just going to go ahead and mow it. It sounds like there are quite a few people in council that already do that, and those are not going to be something that we have to worry about. But I think it probably behooves us that we maybe just take a look at it again, even if it is not an entire study session, but to just get some additional information, because I would like to know, I think, how we're going to monitor as well, because that may play into it, I think, in terms of if we're going to say we're doing it to save costs, and we should be sure that we can say that we're actually saving something.
Okay. Is that enough input?
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Kerwin?
If I may suggest, when management goes back to look at the study session, where we made a whole series of decisions, that might be helpful to share with those, because there were, we were simply at a point where there were no good alternatives, and this at that time seemed to like the least of all evils, where now at the point where we're closing the library one day a week, where the nature center won't operate the same, where all of those things are coming, and Troy residents are beginning to see some of the changes. And again, my concern is that they will really see them when we're not doing the roads any longer, when the county roads are not plowed, when they're not repaired by us. So this is one of a number of things, but it came out of a larger context, in part because of the cost of government.
I will include the property maintenance memorandum that was included and approved by the previous city council as backup material, as well as determining the costs for city and county roads as well.
Okay, are we ready for a resolution on the closed session? Oh, sorry, we had a couple...
Do you have a comment?
Have a new comment.
Councilwoman?
Okay, then I'll go back to you. I have a comment here.
Councilwoman, on this?
No.
He's got a council comment, so go ahead. Councilwoman Kerwin, and then Mayor Protem Fleming?
In, I've been giving some thought, we have our upcoming study session soon, and I thought it might be helpful. We've had volunteers from the community who mentioned it might be a good idea, and I agree to have a facilitator for a portion of the upcoming study session. upcoming study session, really when we're talking about vision and goals, which is crucial at this time. As you can see, there are currently no goals at all on our city council agenda where normally they would reside. I'm not sure that they're on our website, they, they may have been removed, but it's time for us to do that, and I would think for that portion, Madam Mayor, it would be very good to have you as more of a participant rather than as a, a traffic director. And to that extent, I would ask the city manager of the craft to look for someone who would do this pro bono with no cost, and I, I hope that you could find someone who could do just that portion, maybe about an hour of our study session.
Yeah, i- if we do have a facilitator, I would insist that it only be for an hour and we're talking about that section. I think it's unnecessary to have a facilitator for the entire study session.
Certainly.
And certainly if they want to do a pro bono, if it's going to cost us anything, I don't... I can do that. If I can cut grass, I can do that too.
It's consensus.
Any other council comments?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I have a couple of comments.
House McCurran?
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor Potem?
Last meeting, we had, we delayed, actually postponed a resolution to the state librarian that we had drafted because we wanted to put some more teeth into it. Since that time, I know that our librarian, Kathy Russ, and the city manager have had some discussion, and I'd like just to give an update for council on what, what's been learned since the last meeting relative to that postponed resolution.
I'd be happy to. Mr. Lamorato and Mrs., Ms. Russ and myself have met and spoke about the resolution that that city, can you hear me? Spoke about the resolution that council had asked to get more information relative to making an appeal to the, I may be mistaken on the term, but I think it's the state librarian to still be eligible for certain grants and to be able to keep our library open and get some of the grants and amenities by being open for less than 55 hours. And I believe that the state librarian's name is Nancy Robertson. And I have not spoken with her, neither has Mr. Lamorato, but Ms. Russ has, and essentially what our head librarian has been told is that we should come to the state librarian when there's an actual proposal in place, as opposed to an if come question, it's an if come question, you know, if we find a million dollars, will you give us our, our authority to be open for 20 hours a week? The way it was advanced to me is that the state librarian would look at essentially a statement that we have a million dollars, we'll be open 20 hours a week, would you please give us, you know, full credentials for a, a state library? And that essentially was the gist of, of the conversation, to essentially get the money first and then ask for reduced hours secondly.
Madam Mayor?
Mayor Potem Fleming?
As a, as a follow-up, that the way, the way I see it should go is rather than just saying we're going to close the library, if we can come up with what it's going to cost per hour, keep the library open and see if we can, as we move forward through the next year, I know we've got a date certain, we say we're closing it, but I think we have an opportunity just to try to put together a budget that's as low cost as we can with reduced hours as we think is feasible, and put a value to that, and then go back to the state librarian to see what we can do, rather than just say it's definitely going to close. But she's given us a window of opportunity here, and maybe there are other things we'll ask for as well at that time and put some teeth into it, like the number of degreed librarians that we need, a waiver on that and other ideas I'm sure that the, our library staff has. But that would be my thought, as we move forward, rather than just saying we're closing the library, we're going to shut it down, and that's it. Work toward, with our library staff and with our management team, a new library budget with reduced hours to see what we can do in a minimum and go for a waiver at that point. That's my thought.
Councilwoman Slater, did you have an item you wanted to talk, or was that on her item?
No, I, I had a couple of comments.
Oh, right.
I, I also was curious where the resolution was on the, the library, but I, a couple of comments tonight, there were some very difficult decisions made tonight, and I know staff has worked very hard for a while on these proposals. A lot of information that was given to us is not, is not public, and there was a lot to read, and I just want to commend the staff for providing all the information and the hard work. I certainly appreciate it. It was a difficult decision for me, but I tried to do what was best for the city. So having said that, I have a, a couple of propositions or things that I want to initiate, and I think I'll reduce it, reduce it to writing for next meeting, rather than speak verbally, and I'd like Councilwoman Beltrame to be here, because some of it speaks to some grant money that I would like to propose in a couple of areas. So I'm gonna, I'm going to put that in writing and distribute it, and maybe I can discuss that further next, next time.
Okay. And when you put it in writing, you have to send it to Mr. Zerlach, and then he sends it to all of us, because remember, we're not allowed to send an email to each other, to all of us at the same time.
I'm, I'm learning the rules.
Okay. Councilwoman McGinnis?
I just have a couple of comments, and one would be in response to what Councilwoman Fleming said, but before I get to that, I just wanted to say two things about M6 and M7. I really appreciated those being included in the agenda, although we don't really discuss them publicly at the meeting, they are obviously here amongst the hundreds of pages that we went through in preparation for today, but I wanted to pull them out, because I think that they would both be of interest to the public and should be noted in terms of updating us on the organizational structure of the museum and nature center. At least personally, this is exactly what I'm looking for in terms of seeing what we're doing. We're going about our business here, week to week or every other week, depending on what the case may be, and I think that it's very important to have this in our agenda in whatever intervals we're going to do it, so that we can see where these things stand as we're moving forward, because obviously there's a lot of work that's going on outside of our meetings, and that goes for M7 as well. I think that there was some concern that was voiced from citizens in terms of moving forward with their own memberships and their use of the community center, if all they see are some of the headlines that are in the papers after the meetings and not really knowing where that stands. So I think it's very important that we can keep them informed with what's going on and what we're hoping to do, and obviously their continuing membership at the community center is going to be very important for our decisions in whether or not that we can make that cost neutral. And then in terms of Councilman Fleming's comments regarding the library, I too had it in my notes, just to kind of see where we were at, and it was also prompted by the update that we received on some of the other quality of life venues. And I think if we are going to take a route where we're going to be looking at its budget closely right now, knowing that we may be making some very important decisions in terms of changing the way some of our departments look, before we would want to go through it and do something like that, I think we're really going to have to do some of those updates that we talked about having throughout the year in terms of assessing our rolling budget. So I think before we give off the impression that we're ready to make those kinds of decisions, we really have to get to a point where, as a council, we're going to be looking at that rolling update and, and, or the rolling budget, and I know that that's probably something that we will hopefully get information on soon as to how we're going to be looking at that throughout the year. I know it seems like we just passed it, but I would probably feel more comfortable having that out there in terms of, of what we might want to see on council, in terms of updates.
We'll provide updates, I'm hoping to do so every quarter.
Okay. Any other council comments? Mayor Potem Fleming?
Thank you, one more subject here. We've discussed this before, it's relative to Troy Days, and I know the council, we had a report from the past year's Troy Days Committee, and they came forward very clearly and said that under the circumstances, there's no way that that committee could put together a Troy Days. I've had a lot of comments from citizens saying, can we do anything? What can we do, a down, a reduced scale or whatever? I've had a conversation with Tom Kazutsky, who's the executive director of North Woodward Community Foundation. He's the same person who we sent a letter to back on March 29th, but he sent a letter to us, to Captain Gerald Shirley, Troy Police Department, asking some questions. This, this North Woodward Community Foundation's believe they can put on a Troy Days event, if not this year, certainly in 2011, possibly even this year, that would not cost the city a dime, would not require extensive city services that we've had in the past, and in addition, generate a revenue stream for the North Woodward Community Foundation that would be poured back into Troy and surrounding communities. They would see this as a fundraiser. So I had a meeting with city manager, Mr. Zerlach, and he gave his staff job to do. We got the letter back on June the 4th regarding a privately sponsored carnival on city property, because what this North Woodward Foundation was looking for, they were looking to use Bowlin Park, which is an ideal venue, a park we've used in the past. But having read this report that I believe, has all of council received this?
Yes.
All council received this, yeah, we got that FYI memorandum. Basically looking at this, the questions are answered that Mr. Kazutsky asked relative to insurance requirements and so forth, but there are a number of standards for approval, especially uses of a city Troy park, that basically says this is not going to happen, even though it's cost neutral to the city, unless, there's no way a private group could bring in food vendors and do the things they would need unless it was a vote of the city council. I think I know the feeling of the city council on this, at this time, but the conclusion really is, from the management team and assessment, we've given the answers back, we can give the answers back to the North Woodward Community Foundation, but basically, a private entity seeking to hold a carnival on city property doesn't seem to be very feasible, based on this report. And basically, the direction is this should go toward a private property, okay? And I'm looking just for a nod of heads on council as to what direction to give Mr. Kazutsky. We don't want this on city property. It proposed some other venues, some other areas, but you don't want any risk, any liability, so...
Okay, I, I spoke to Mr. Kazutsky also, and told him that it would, could not occur on, at Bowlin Park. I think that the Opafest, that the Greek Orthodox Church, they have activities and vendors and stuff, and they have it at, at their church property. There are properties that are available, and when I spoke to Mr. Kazutsky, he did say they were looking at Oakland Mall, and they're all, we're also looking at some other venues. So I think if, that the report is correct, that if a private entity wants to do some kind of a fest, you know, Opafest, anything like that, should be on private property, and that, I think that's what our, our vote of the council said, but I'll let other council members either nod or say so.
I see four nods to my left saying consensus is informally, that it would need to be on private property, not on city property.
And it can't use the name Troy Days.
I don't know about that, that's a legal issue.
I think that was already settled, though. Okay, yes, Councilwoman Howard?
Oh, I was just going to add that, you know, it, it may have morphed into that, but I, at the time, it seemed like it was a financial issue, and, you know, the, you know, it's kind of interesting, because there have been comments about, you know, making Troy fun and doing this, that and the other, and, you know, to, this is definitely taking one step backward, because I would say that if somebody wants to do it on a park, and, you know, the city has no financial responsibility for it, and the organization can obtain its insurance, et cetera, et cetera, then there seems to be no downside to me, but that, that, I would certainly be curious as to what downside is, because I don't think that the memo really recognizes the fact that this is not a unique circumstance, we're not the only fair in the entire world, but that these things are done all the time on government property, and so that's, that's just my comment.
Councilwoman Kirwin?
I kind of don't want to repeat all the stuff that we did before, what Troy is, where we really did talk about the costs of the city in terms of, of holding something on that, the repair of the parks, all of the other issues that come with that. However, I do wish Tom Kazutsky and North Woodward Foundation great success with their nonprofit fundraiser, I think it's a great idea. We do see like things in parking lots, I mean, if you drive down Rochester to Rochester Hills, you see right there at the corner, the Kmart headquarters, a kind of a fun fair, a different concept, so I'm not sure how much they would want to do, or what, what even they'd like to do, but I could even see Woodside, right there at Woodside, which has such a nice grand parking lot, that there would be opportunities, and I'm sure that, that nonprofits together would find a field, but I, at this point, with our limited funds, that's what we talked about before, was that inability to even repair, go back and, and fix those parks and removing them, and I know that, that we've already talked about that, things that are currently held in those parks and saying, no, you can't be here for those days, so I don't see that as happening, and I, I do see still some, some problems with that, I do wish him well.
Madam Mayor?
Yes. Mayor Potem Fleming?
There's a follow-up, that the response that the city staff gave basically was instructions on insurance requirements and a bond that the park would be put back in same condition as it was originally received, so that's not even a question, there's no cost to the city, it's fully insured, fully bonded, park repaired, we're saying we don't want to have a Troy Days type festival on the city facilities when it's not costing us any money, and there's no risk to the city, and it's a benefit to the community, but we just don't want to allow this to happen in the city park. I agree with Councilman Howard, I don't see the big downside, I think it's an ideal place for it, but I think we're the minority over here. But really, to address your concerns, they have been addressed, it's all bonded, it's not, it's not an issue, would be, would not be an expense to the city, as a matter of fact, the revenue, and if that's the, the, the city could have park revenue, there would be an income to the city, not an expense, because there would be some fees for the park, just like you'd use, charge anyone else that wanted to do. But I see some obstacles, I think city manager objects to it, and obviously, some of the council do, I think I'm in the minority there. So I'll go back to Mr. Kazutsky, and his option is to go to another place, not on the city, but I think we're going to lose an opportunity, because once someone else gets that, those carnival rides and gets those dates set, Troy Days is done forever as far as a city on a city property. It'll be done, we may be it done in another community, it may be done at Oakland Mall, who knows where it's done, but I think this is going to happen, and I hope that when this foundation wants to move forward, or whatever entity wants to move forward and do a Troy Days, that this city supports it and doesn't put up obstacles, because we've had our opportunity, and it's something I can understand, we don't want to, to take on right now. But we're basically saying, you can't do it in the city park, go do it somewhere else. I think it will be done, and we'll lose what we had at the Troy Days, it'll be a private entity.
Madam Mayor. Councilwoman Kirwin?
I think that, excuse me, Mayor Potem, but I think that's a mischaracterization of the complete memo, to say, well, there's nothing here and we just don't want to have fun. And I think that it's a worthwhile discussion to have when we talk about our goals, because is the focus going to be on supplying some specific services in public safety, which we can do and can do well, or do we want to be expansive again in our approach? And that's a bigger, big picture conversation, I think that, that's something that we'll want to talk about as a body, but on this specific issue, I think we've been through it.
Madam Mayor, I think you're still missing the point, this is not a steady function, we're not asking city employees to do anything, this foundation's not. You keep bringing it back to the city, and we've been through it, this is a private organization wanting to use the park, actually paying money to the city, a revenue stream, with no downside, as I see, if they met all these requirements, but I don't think it's going to happen. But we're not looking at using city resources to, to do this, this is privately done, but it won't be allowed in the city park, is what I'm getting. Too many obstacles. Too many obstacles, but there's not a cost, there's not a risk.
Mayor?
Councilman Howardak?
Two things, one is that, you know, it does tie into our goals and objectives, not only of being a livable city, but also for economic development, because if you look at trying to attract families to a city, it's not just parks, but it's also the recreation, and I can assure you that you wanna have healthy endeavors for your youth to engage in, in order to have both a livable community and also to attract and develop your economy. So it'll be harder to attract those businesses that are employing fathers and mothers because of that. Also, a larger picture question is, you know, if an organization is set up to run the nature center or the museum, I think it's probably to their advantage to know that this city council may or may not support their effort to use those facilities, and before they get too far along in the process, you know, if this council is of the mindset that not one single private organization will be able to take over a formerly, something that was done, performed by the city, that is not an essential service, then they, then we need to let them know that. I think it's only fair, because if they're gonna go up the effort to set up nonprofit organizations, to raise volunteers and to bring in interns from across the state to basically work for free, and yet, and at the 11th hour, we're not gonna let them use it, you know, it is a policy issue, you know? What are we gonna do? Are we gonna close down the nature center and the museum, or if an organization wants to run it? Well, we have a process that allows them to do so, so that's the big picture question. And I don't say that rhetorically, I really do think that's something we need to look at, and I think it ties in to the other two communications that are on the agenda as M items.
Any other council comments? Somebody wanna move that closed session item?
Mayor?
Councilman Howardak?
Be it resolved that the Troy City Council shall meet in closed session as permitted by MCL 15.268E, pending litigation, Troy versus RCU, Independence Incorporated, Pro Car Wash East.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Howardak, seconded by Mayor Protem Fleming, that we approve the resolution as printed in red. Discussion, the vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
Motion passes. We're in recess then, and we'll begin closed session.